Good evening. The February 10th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Winth. Councilmember Newsma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Saffordin. Councilmember Revelle. Councilmember Reed will not be here tonight. Councilmember Herakaris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Harris.
Here, but I don't have a mic.
And Mayor Biss. Mayor Biss.
Yeah, it's a team-building exercise. We're sharing mics this evening.
Okay.
I'm here too, sorry. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is approval of virtual councilmember participation, which I believe is not necessary for this evening. The next item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. There are two proclamations to share. One is declaring February 2025 Black History Month. Whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who worked in Kentucky coal mines as a child and was the son of formerly enslaved people, proposed and launched a week-long celebration of the individuals and occasions having significant impact on African-American history in America. And whereas Dr. Woodson chose the month of February to conduct this commemoration because the birthdays of two men whose actions have significantly affected African-Americans in this country are in February, namely Frederick Douglass, the gifted orator, writer, and statesman, who was a tireless advocate of the anti-slavery movement; and Abraham Lincoln, a native son of Kentucky, who signed the Emancipation Proclamation, also a noted Illinois resident; and whereas African-American History Month was originally founded to be the second week of February and at its inception was named Negro History Week and was expanded to a month with a name change to African-American History Month during a convention of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and Culture in the 1970s, with the association also changing its name at that time to the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas during the month of February 2025, across the United States of America, observances will be held to increase public awareness of the importance of Black history and the contributions that African-Americans have made toward their country. And whereas the citizens of Evanston should recommit themselves to an ideal America where equality and justice will always prevail and to the principles of love, wisdom, understanding, and compassion toward one another; and whereas the respect that fellow citizens have for one another determines the value of any country, now therefore I do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Evanston and do hereby urge citizens of this great city to be mindful of the contributions of African-Americans and all of its residents throughout the year. Next proclamation is for Government Communicators Day. Whereas the role of government communications professionals is to inform, educate, and engage their communities; and whereas robust communication in government creates trust and inspires residents to take action and be involved; and whereas government communications create relationships and calls to action, build awareness and understanding through storytelling, engage and foster engagement on civic issues, and use all channels to include people in critical decisions; and whereas it is essential to have strong communications in government because it is a foundational element of living in a democracy where citizens have the freedom to make their voice heard; and whereas the city of Evanston is proud and has deep gratitude and recognition for government communicators, professionals, and dedication, hard work, commitment, enthusiasm, and sacrifice, now therefore I do hereby proclaim February 21st, 2025, as Government Communicators Day in Evanston, Illinois, and encourage all residents to thank communicators who have dedicated their careers to ensure Evanston has effective, impactful, and successful communication strategies that resonate and are relevant. And with that, the next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Mendoza. First up, I'd like to invite Tashik Kerr and Bridget Johnson up to the podium or up to the microphone to discuss Love Your Block Initiative. And I also want to take a moment to thank Councilmember Harris for her ongoing support of Love Your Block.
Good evening, members of the city council. Tashik Kerr, Assistant to the City Manager, and joining me today is...
Bridget. Bridget Johnson. I am longtime Evanstonian. I am the AmeriCorps Vista member. What I do is connect, recruit, and train our volunteers for this project, and I also connect them with the council members. So I'm looking forward to this program here.
So we're here today to give you an update on the Love Your Block program. As you may be aware, the city of Evanston received a $100,000 grant for a Love Your Block initiative to support resident-led neighborhood revitalization projects. And the city of Evanston is one of 16 communities. So what is Love Your Block? So Love Your Block will support resident-driven projects and make it easier for residents to connect with each other, city leaders, and resources. There are no restrictions on the grant, so residents can choose what they want to use the grants for. So that could include landscaping, porch repair, stairs, neighborhood beautification is their choice. So we have a video that we want to play that we're hoping to model. It's the city of South Bend, Indiana, their Love Your Block project. Anderson, can you? There we go. So with this grant, the Bloomberg Center have us identify a pressing public problem for the city. And as we all know, that's affordable housing. So they ask us to develop a problem statement that kind of gets at this using the $100,000. So we said to stimulate community self-determination in preserving affordable housing, the city of Evanston will commence a home improvement program for homes in the second, fifth, eighth, and ninth wards. Volunteers will prioritize rehab projects for seniors and low-income households in historically marginalized neighborhoods. So part of this process is to have a deliberation with the community. So we asked the community if they agree with this problem statement that city staff proposed. So we had over 442 residents take the survey, and 70% agreed that it should be used for small home improvement programs, and another 30% said no or they need more information. So if they said no or that they need more information, they provided us what they would like to use the funds for. So this is a word cloud that just states what they would like to use the funds for. So it varies: neighborhood beautification, sidewalk, improving public spaces. Next slide. And as I mentioned, this is a resident-led project, so we want to co-design the program with residents, so not designing the project for residents but with the residents.
So from that survey, we asked the community, did they want to get involved? And we formed a steering group that has been meeting for the past couple of weeks, and they have designed the application and set the criteria for the application. They also will be part of project leads when the project starts, and they'll also be doing things like fundraising partnerships and sponsorships to help the community in the projects. And also lastly, is designing a logo for the Love Your Block. When we got together, when the steering group got together, we asked them what kind of outcome did they want from this project? And from their answers, we created the mission statement, which is, "The Love Your Block Evanston Initiative empowers residents to unite and bring their vision to life for a safer, more vibrant, accessible, and sustainable community that celebrates its unique identity." Right? Love Your Block, they also came up with the eligibility, the grant eligibility requirements, as you can see up here, and they also talked about what the funds can be used for, such as home improvement on the exterior side, neighborhood beautification, creating neighborhood safety, neighborhood events, and again, improving public spaces. The Love Your Block also, like you have, it's two years, $50,000 per year. So this year, they decided to allocate the funds for the four wards, and as you can see... Oh, it's not up there, huh? As you can see, $14,000 will go to the second ward, fifth, $14,000 to the fifth ward, $9,000 to the eighth ward, and $8,000 to the ninth ward.
Can you explain why those numbers quickly?
Sure. If you look in the left side there, you have the targeted areas, and as you can see, the second ward and the ninth, the fifth ward are bigger in size.
Population?
Population is greater than the other two wards, and that's how we split the allocated or they allocated the funds for it. Did that answer your question?
I wanted everybody else to know. You know I know.
Right. Okay. So...
Our timeline.
So as Bridget mentioned, the Love Your Block steering group has been working for over two weeks now. They're in their third week. The application opens February 14th on Valentine's Day.
See the connection?
The application closes on March 7th. Winning projects will be announced by April 22nd, and the projects will begin, they'll determine that this week, when the projects should begin. And many grand projects must be completed by August 31st. And these are some options for their logo that our communications team developed, so they'll decide this week on what logo they would like for this program.
Thank you so much for this. Councilmember Burns, followed by Harris.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that y'all have done on this, and I know I have an email from you to get back to you, and the answer is yes, since we're in front of each other right now. So whatever you need me to do, I'll do it. Question about co-design. So during the co-design phase, is that when, was there a decision to expand the scope of how the funds could be used?
Yes.
And was that informed by the 30% who said, "Well, you know, either need more information or we like to use it differently"?
So we shared the results with the steering committee of what the residents said in the survey, and so they took that feedback and came up with those categories.
Yeah, because I love that, because usually we just take off with the 70%. Okay, we got enough, we'll use all the funds for home improvement. And so I like that there was, that we modified it to take in some of the concerns and ideas of the 30%. So I just wanted to emphasize that. So thank you.
Thank you all so much again.
Councilmember Harris?
Sorry. Yes, I just want to say thank you so much to Tashik. We found this grant, and it was just a great opportunity. She brought Bridget on, Class 87, we're in the house. But it's been very collaborative. Clerk Mendoza is on the cause, and those can be spirited. We're really, everybody's pulling and tugging and trying to make this right for the community. I think it was 60, how many people? No, it was 30-something that started on the steering committee, because that was a question asked, "Did you want to be on the steering committee?" So we didn't just handpick people. You had to self-disclose that you were interested in doing that. And so we're meeting, we're trying to figure it out. It's a great program, and I look forward to seeing it in the community, and we hope to have at least one day where most people are out in the community so that people see this work happening and want to partake. So I'm just grateful that you did the paperwork. I gave suggestions, but Tashik did all the heavy lifting, and I'm grateful that we received it, and I look forward to loving our blocks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next up for city manager announcements, we, as promised, we have an update on Civic Center Police and Fire Headquarters.
Members of city council, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. Tonight, we just wanted to provide you an update. We had said we'd come back early this year with some updates on the city hall, police, fire headquarters relocation feasibility study, and I just wanted to let you know where we are. We're still waiting on some information. Just to recap what we talked about last time, we had just finished having some listening sessions, and so one of the things that we were really trying to get out of our four listening sessions and the survey were, what do people want from their city hall? And so we had identified, people were wanting us to be cost-conscious, although not at the expense of having a quality project, enhance accessibility with access to free public parking and transit, addressing language barriers by having bilingual or multilingual people in public facing position so that it makes it easier for people to access services, free or low-cost access to community meeting spaces, especially for groups that frequently partner with the city on different initiatives like Citizens Green or Evanston, and then well-connected to the rest of the city in a central location with access to transit and prioritizing ADA accessibility with that as well. So we went through, we talked about some of these options, but not all of these. We worked with AECOM to identify and really focus in on some specific options. First, acquiring 1801 Maple and 906 University Place to act as a new police-fire headquarters. That is under negotiation. Our estimated cost for that does not look right. I think that is a mistake, but that cost is... Not there. I will get that for you and send out an updated table.
68.4 million is what it says in the packet.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, 68.4 million. Acquiring 906 University Place and developing it into an integrated...
Let's just clarify, and that chart says 158.7?
Yes.
It should say 68.4.
Yes, it should. That is a typo. The very alternate number one, estimated cost in January 2024. Okay. Acquiring 906 University Place and developing an integrated civic center and police-fire headquarters at 116.7 million. It is not an ideal location for a city hall because of the way the building is designed, but we did want to investigate that cost. Rebuilding the existing police-fire headquarters on the current site, as well as renovating the civic center, this building on its current site at 166, and then rebuilding the police-fire headquarters and renovating the civic center, both on this site, at 143 million. One interesting thing that we did ask AECOM to explore was, if we wanted to go with geothermal, would that save us significant dollars? They indicated that actually it would be kind of a cost premium right now because of the availability of geothermal technology in this market. A little different if you're maybe in Seattle, but for this market, it's still a little bit of a costly technology. And then we did look at, why is our renovating cost for this building so high? And really, that, we looked back at a number of reports that happened over the last several years, and as we did that, we found that, in fact, the reports generally all validate that this is a fairly expensive project. So the Doyle report was done in 98, the U.S. Equity Report in 2003, and the AECOM report, which was finished with its cost estimate in 2023. And we found that there's just been pretty consistent pricing on redoing this building. Pricing is getting more expensive because of the additional building deterioration, and there's been some pretty significant changes in building code requirements, as well as our own requirements for Climate Action Resilience Plan. So for that, we are finding, though, that the cost of the building is going to be north of $50 million to do that. So one thing that we looked into quite a bit since our last meeting is historic preservation tax credits. And in an ideal world, you would have Cade Sterling telling you this information, but he is out sick today, so you're just stuck with me. But he, we asked Cade, who is our preservation, historic preservation specialist on staff, to really look into what are the requirements of preservation tax credits, and would our civic center renovation project be a good fit? We also asked AECOM simultaneously to do a memo on that. They did not coordinate, they didn't read each other's memos until they were done, and both memos are included in the packet. But what they found were, here are the requirements for the federal tax credits, more or less. You have to be listed in the National Register of Historic Places, which this building is. It needs to be a substantial renovation, where the project would exceed the raised costs of the building. That is definitely true in our case. Then there is this requirement that there is a guidance document called the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. That has a lot of very specific criteria that would be required to be met. Most likely, we would meet those things, but there is substantial, significant, additional documentation that's required to prove that you did those things. So similar to LEED certification, you can do the things that are required in LEED certification. If you go for LEED certification, you have to have a lot of additional monitoring documentation, so that is required in this case as well. And then following the rehabilitation, the building must be income-producing for at least five years. That basically means in a non-governmental or non- municipal use, we need to put it back on the tax rolls. And renovating this directly would not necessarily be a qualified project. In addition, once you do look into going down the preservation tax credit rolls, so assuming that this would somehow be a qualified project, only certain qualified rehabilitation expenses are eligible. And Cade's memo describes this, if you took this building and turned it upside down and shook it, everything that didn't fall out of the building would still be and was still attached would be a qualified rehabilitation expense. So no furniture, but the HVAC system, the electrical system, the building envelope itself, those types of things that are attached to the building and physical improvements of the building would be included. But the building site improvements are not included. Any furniture or finishings, that stuff is not included. Federal tax credits are worth 20% of the QRE, the Qualified Rehabilitation Expenses, so not the overall project cost. Cade uses this example of a $15 million project. It is not out of the realm that only $10 million would be for qualified rehabilitation expenses. And so you would get to only $2 million of a $15 million project would be eligible. However, what's a little bit harder to calculate in this example is that we would also have to do a lot of additional documentation and maybe do some things that are different. And so our QREs, the cost of the project might be a little higher because we are going for preservation tax credits. And then QREs are only available on the portion of the building that is income-producing following the rehabilitation. So if we develop, redevelop this building, which is approximately twice as large as we need, and we take 50% of the building and rent it out for an income-producing use, then that 50%, the QREs for only that half of the building would be qualified rehabilitation expenses that would be eligible for tax credits. So now, our $15 million project, only $1 million of the project is eligible, do we receive a grant for tax credits. There is also a state of Illinois program. The minimum of the state of Illinois program is that you have to be eligible under the federal preservation tax credit program in order to get a state of Illinois grant. The state funds their program at $25 million a year. It is a highly competitive program in which many projects a year go unfunded, and they cap the amount that you can get at $3 million per project. Because it is highly competitive, putting a project that is a historic building back on the property tax rolls and into a long-term income-producing use is going to look better on your application than if you are not doing those things. So where are we? I feel like I'm missing a slide in this table, and I apologize, but it is in our packet. I'm struggling with what to do with that. If we can pull up the packet. We just want to pull up the item under the discussion item. My apologies. So what you will see, if you look at page 14 of the packet, is that we looked at where we are with all of the alternates that we're seriously considering. So one alternate is to renovate the Civic Center building. There's a capital cost to that, which when we escalate it over the amount of inflation that has been occurring with construction costs... Nope, you're almost there. That's the packet. There we are. The cost of renovation is now estimated at $71 million. We also looked at the operation and maintenance costs over the 20-year period. So we are spending an estimated $650,000 a year on maintaining this building. That does not include any emergency capital repairs. That's purely things like the staff that are assigned to this building, the custodial contract, different contracts for maintaining the fire system and the elevator system. So that 18.1 is 21 million, 20 years of that with $650,000, and this year escalated at 3% per year to just account for some inflation. And that gives us a total of $89 million spent over a 20-year period. This is not a present value calculation. It doesn't tell us like an equivalent value in today's dollars. It could certainly mock that up if we want, but just generally, what would we be spending over 20 years? Leasing 909 Davis as a city hall is a good comparison just because those costs are much more fixed. So when we look at 909 Davis, there is a rental cost, there's a total cost per year that runs around $2.5 million, and the rental cost is actually about 30% to 40% of that cost. And the remainder of that cost, so let's say $1.1 million, that is escalated in the calculation and in our lease at 2.5% per year. So when you look at what we would spend over 20 years, it's 22.1 million. Now, the caveat is, we're in a 15-year lease, so I actually just continued the escalation out as if the lease were extended to 20 years, at the same escalating at 2.5% per year. Then I looked at the estimated operations and maintenance costs. That is, again, a starting point. We know from when we did the lease negotiation, the city is going to pay approximately 27% of the allowable building operation and maintenance costs. That's based entirely on square footage. It is true regardless of if we're the only tenant in the building or if there are 100 tenants in the building. It's just based on our square footage costs. And so I took that number, I escalated it at 3% per year, similar to the operations and maintenance costs for the civic center, and I extended it out for 20 years. So that is our cost for O&amp;M cost. So that creates a total 20-year cost for the lease at 909 Davis. Now, library is something that we're still investigating, and we... and we won't have that information for another few weeks. But when we have that, I will insert it into the table. And option four is the option to, at 900 Clark Street, which is the north end of the AMC movie building. And that is the southeast corner of the intersection of Maple and Clark, which is the entrance to Maple Street Garage. That project is, we've just gotten a fixed number from the developers. We are actually looking to work with them to really try to understand what that cost really is. We've done no negotiation on it. And for the operation and maintenance costs, I pretty unfairly just applied the operations cost for 909 Davis. It's an assumption just for this purposes. We're going to look at refining that over the next few weeks to get a better number for options three and four. So based on that, that's kind of where we are with our study. Again, I hope to further refine options three and four. And then we will return back in a few weeks with an updated version of this table. And then in, basically, we don't have to go back to the presentation. The next steps are to basically really negotiate these options three and four. We are still looking, we're in ongoing negotiations regarding the 1801 Maple for the Police, Fire Headquarters, as is not yet resolved.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Laura, for all of this work. You've, I think, done an effective job of following the direction of council to kind of leave no stone unturned as we explore options for this building, for current locations, or for, you know, potential future locations for Civic Center, as well as Police and Fire. And throughout this process, I've really tried to maintain an open mind about this building. Because I, I like this building. This is the building I've been coming to for almost 20 years. And when I think of City of Evanston, I think of this building. We've done, I think, everything we can to leave no stone unturned. And the historic preservation tax credits are the latest example of that. And what I'm hearing is that we, historic preservation tax credits can be used to renovate this building, but not if we want to be here.
That is my understanding.
Okay. And, you know, as much as it's sad to admit, you know, I think we are at the point now, given the numbers we're looking at here, where it's very clear that staying in this building long-term just, just not, just doesn't make sense. It's not the building we need. And even if it were the building we need, it is by far the most costly option. Now, I'm not quite sure what the best option is long-term, but I think it's time to face the reality and say that this building is not going to be the long-term home of Civic Center for the City of Evanston. I think we should move into 909 Davis, see how that feels. And that's at least based on, you know, these initial estimates here, the most cost-effective option, at least for now. Let's move into 909, see how that feels. And, you know, we can make long-term decisions at some future point when we have firm data that allow us to make a fully informed decision. But I think we have enough information right now to bring us to the conclusion that it's time, as sad as it might be, to move on from this building. And I think the future of this building will better serve the community as some kind of mixed-income redevelopment. And I'm prepared to make a motion to direct staff to start thinking about this and have this come back to City Council at our next meeting as a special order of business, not wanting to rush through anything tonight. But this will allow the community time to engage in the conversation. So if there are no objections, I'm going to make that motion right now. So I'm going to move to add the non-municipal use and exploration of an adaptable reuse of 2100 Ridge Avenue as a special order of business to the February 24th meeting.
Second.
And this will allow us to have a robust and open conversation with adequate community feedback about the long-term future of this building.
Councilmember Newsma moves to create a special order of business on the February 24th City Council agenda to, to plan for the adaptive reuse. Is that right?
I just emailed the language.
Sorry.
To add the non-municipal use and exploration of an adaptable reuse of this building as a special order of business for our next meeting.
Okay, sorry, let me say it again. Councilmember Newsma moves to create a special order of business on the January, February 24th, 2025 City Council agenda to shift toward non-municipal use and exploring adaptive reuse options for the building at 2100 Ridge. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea primarily because I don't think we really have all the numbers that we need to make an informed decision. I did have a construction firm, as well as, you know, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, come through, tour the building to look at, we don't need a gut rehab. And that's what we're talking, looking at the prices. We're looking at a really about a gut rehab. And I think the estimates that I got back were closer to $35 million. And so I think what we need really are accurate numbers that reflect only what needs to be done on this building before we can make truly an informed assessment. I'm happy to share this. I'll share the estimate that I got from having a whole team tour the building. I just, we don't need a total gut rehab of this building to remain here. And those are the numbers we're looking at, so that's my feeling.
Councilmember Saffron.
Yes, I guess it's a question for Councilmember Newsma. What are you talking about, having a discussion, having staff prepare a presentation like this? What is your special order of business?
What I'd like to do is make the formal decision that the City of Evanston is going to move on from this building. I don't think it would be appropriate to make that decision tonight, but I would like to have that decision, have that discussion and make a decision sooner rather than later.
So you're proposing that the City Council would vote at our next meeting in a special order of business to move out of the Civic Center?
We are already moving out of the Civic Center. I guess the vote would be to not move back.
So, okay. What you've emailed says, "I move to add the non-municipal use and exploration of an adaptable reuse of 2100 Ridge Avenue as a special order of business to the February 24th meeting." So you are looking for a vote on something. What is the vote that you are proposing would be part of the special order of business?
I would like to have a vote on whether or not we intend to move back on this building. And I think we should do that in the context of knowing what the potential alternative uses are going to be.
So the vote is for this council to say what the intent of the City of Evanston is to do? I, I just think you're, you don't have an actual action. Help me to understand what the vote would be. How, how do you see the question being framed? And what would the vote that this council would take at our next meeting under the special order of business be?
I would like staff to advise us on alternative uses for this building and then make a decision that we want to pursue some kind of alternative use rather than move back here. With, I'm not saying we need to decide an alternative use, but I think it would, yeah, be of benefit to put this issue behind us and not let 2100 Ridge continue to be an issue that is hanging over our heads and hanging over our budgets for the next 20 years.
Okay, but again, I'm asking, at this next meeting, there'll be a special order of business. There will be a yes or no vote. The question that we will be voting yes or no on is what? Do we intend, I mean, that's, it's got to be a specific question.
Yeah, shall we move back to 2100 Ridge?
That, okay, so you are proposing?
Yeah, I'll ask, if staff wants to help me clarify the language, I'm, I'm open to wordsmithing for sure.
My understanding is what you're asking for is a resolution that would remove the possibility that we would renovate the Civic Center as a city hall and begin a detailed look at alternate uses for it?
Correct.
Okay, so how, that's, the wording would be what? And Alex, this would be your department's job to draft?
Yeah. Thank you, Alex Rugge, Corporation Counsel. My understanding is that the motion would direct staff to remove the Civic Center from the possibility of being a Civic Center for the future use. So I think the resolution would state that we remove consideration of 2100 Ridge as a possible future of the Civic Center and further direct staff to look at all non-municipal uses. I think if Paul Zelmasak is here, my understanding is that putting assets to work is starting in March. So we could further direct putting assets to work to have them look at the Civic Center at 2100 Ridge for all non-municipal uses going forward.
Okay. Which, just to be clear, putting assets for work can also look at non-municipal uses for 2100 Ridge right now. There's no, nothing precluding them from considering all uses for 2100 Ridge. What you're looking to do is to remove this as a Civic Center as an option. And you would have to draft something that would make it clear that this would not be used for a municipal use. And that's what you're looking to have voted on at our next meeting as a special order of business.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
You know, I don't know if I've had, you know, I know there was a referendum at some point. I don't know if I've had a single resident reach out and say they love this building so much that they could never possibly think of not being here, not one. And probably after today, I'll get a bunch. I haven't heard that. What I have heard is, well, we always hear, like, parking is important, accessibility is important. And, and I think as we've considered relocating, we've, we've addressed those things. And I think we can, as I've talked to residents, we can even expand accessibility in some ways if, if we say, see as a need for it. I think one of the benefits of being at 909 is the garage. There's parking available nearby that the city owns. And so we get to dictate, you know, what stalls are used to help people get into the Civic Center. For those who haven't been following this discussion, the information that we're getting is, people really, just like banks, people aren't really going to city halls as much. More things are digital. I try my best not to go into a bank or a city hall. You know, I'm on, I'm, I'm on kiosks, I'm online, I, I don't want the lines, I love that. I'm self-checkout, that's, that's how I roll. You see me in the self-checkout line. I'm trying to get in and out. And I think most people are moving towards that as life gets more complicated. And there's just a lot to do in balance. And, and so because of that, I think it's left us with an opportunity to think about, okay, well then what is the function of a Civic Center? And it seems like it's more of a place for the people that are going to be there every day, which are employees. And to make sure that if you do need to get in and out, you can do it quickly and, and get the things that you need and talk to, you need to talk to. I think also something that came up a lot is people always love community spaces that they can reserve to meet. So I think we've set aside some space for that within the building. And, and so those are kind of the important functions that we, we, we think about. In terms of employees, and I've, I've said this before, I've been quoted probably as saying it, I want to make sure that this building can attract the next generation of public sector employees. That's what I really want. And I don't think we do that couch between, I don't think we do that in this neighborhood. This was all, this was a school at one point. It was never kind of thought, designed and thought of to serve this purpose. It kind of was retrofitted as best as it, as it could to be that, but it wasn't intended for that. Where we're at, where we're locating now was actually intended to be office space, which is what we need. And so to me, it's a better, better fit. When you layer on to that, that it literally is between, it's like the, it's the heart of public transit for this city. It's between both of our rails. I, I believe every bus stop is at Davis at some point. And so initially, when I thought about accessibility, I was thinking, you know, car-centric kind of mindset. And, and when I got out of that, I realized this is, where we're locating now is probably the most accessible place we could be in the City of Evanston. I think that's a wonderful achievement for us. And so if I could go on and on about this, and I have, which is why I appreciate this motion, because unless there is outstanding information that we still need, I believe the only reason why 909 doesn't make sense, we've already seen that, that out of the other scenarios, it's, it's the most cost-effective, right? So we know that. But the only thing that makes it a bad option is if we're holding on to both at the same time. It just doesn't make sense. That's the only thing that doesn't make sense to me is if we're doing both. And so I appreciate the motion so that we could try to move, you know, inch closer to hopefully putting this back on the tax rolls. I would love to get an estimate at the next meeting of how much the, the city would bring in. Right now, we're not collecting anything. We would be putting this back on the tax roll and, and collecting money. So I'd like to get an estimate on that. But again, if, if there's some information we're missing, and we've had plenty of opportunities to specifically say what information is missing. But if we have that, let's get that on record so we can, we can get it in front of us. But if not, again, I appreciate the motion and would also like to move forward on this issue. Thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Kelly with 4:15 left.
Thank you. Again, I just would like to read this letter from Redmond Construction that came through. And they said, "Following a walkthrough on December 23rd and subsequent review of the Grumman-Buckus report we put together, pricing for the project, and I believe you can upgrade, we believe you can upgrade the building for 35 to 40 million. That would include upgrades of HVAC, plumbing, electrical, ADA, and a decent cosmetic facelift throughout for that price. Additionally, following a detailed review of the provided program, my team is confident the city could fit most, if not all, of its programmatic needs into three-quarters of the building and potentially sublease an entire floor to another company or affiliated organization." So I think we haven't really seen those options of, of pricing that would be only for what's needed. And additionally, perhaps providing like daycare for our, our staff. I think that would be a wonderful use of this building. We have beautiful grounds outdoors. I think we really haven't visited those programs. And Jonathan, I really, I mean, I feel like you're really preempting public voice. I think minimally, this was a referendum at one point. I think at least if you want to do that, we should have two public hearings here where people can come and, and write here to the council chambers so we can hear from the public to just try to ram this through. In two weeks' time is again, once again dismissive of wanting to hear from our public. And I think, given the history of this place, given that there was a referendum, minimally, we owe that to the public. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Council, nope. Councilmember Hadda Khatis, followed by Nguyen.
So I'll chime in here. I personally don't have much nostalgia for this building. I mean, it's a beautiful building outside. This reminds me of a lot of buildings on campus that are retrofitted for offices. It's not great to work in. I think our shift downtown, I'll agree with Councilmember Burns, I think is going to be really good for staff. It's also going to be really good for residents that take public transit. I've heard a lot of positive things from constituents about that. You know, staff has really looked at all the options. I, you know, at the beginning, I just, like, you need to know all the options and keep an open mind when you're making a big decision like this. And I want to remind people, there, we have limited real estate in town. So there's not that many options of where we can build and where we can do rehab. I do think that, you know, in the short term, and, you know, 10, 15 years is relatively short term. I think 909 Davis makes the most sense financially. We also, you know, we, we've asked staff to really dig deep and analyze what's, what it would take to rehab this building. And I really want to stress that we need to stick with an RFP process and not have outside negotiations with companies about doing work here. That's just not, that's not the way, you know, I'm not saying our RFP process is perfect, but there are safety guide, like, guidelines around the way we do business. And we really need, you know, I think we've exhausted every, you know, possible outcome here with the, using a design firm that we had an open RFP and a very clear set of standards on how, how we want to do business that way. So I agree with, you know, taking this off the, the list of possible possibilities for the Civic Hall going forward and, and going forward with the. Civic Hall going forward and going forward with the motion that Councilmember Newsma suggested. I'd be open to having two hearings of it, that's fine, but I think we do have to start the discussion.
Mayor, may I make a statement, please?
Yes, of course.
So I just want to talk to the fact that you had another firm come into the building. So originally, costing the renovation of this building was not part of the contract. At your suggestion, which was a very good suggestion, we had AECOM do a change order and come in and really look at what it would cost to renovate this building. They reviewed drawings, they reviewed the ADA report, the Grumman-Buckus, which I will say is not an up-to-date report because it does not include climate action resilience plan requirements. They reviewed our climate action resilience plan requirements as well as building code issues. They got into all of the mechanical rooms. They looked at this building, which is the original section of the building, and looked at the drawings and said, you know, that we are so far from fire code and life safety code in this section of the building that it would be better to gut all the floors in this section of the building. It would be cheaper than trying, because it's a wood frame structure, it would be cheaper to build a new steel structure inside this original section than it would be to try to fireproof a five-story wood structure. So I appreciate that you are really trying to show that you're looking thoughtfully at this, but I don't believe that a firm that walks through the public spaces of the building and spends less than a day thinking about it is getting to the same level of quality as the firm that we hired as a city to actually do this work. And I realize that people can have different opinions about the qualifications of staff to review and make these decisions, but to not have the staff involved at all as you are coming up with these cost estimates and just throwing them out there, just doesn't seem like it's very responsible. I'm not sure how we can guarantee we're comparing apples to apples.
So I just need to respond because I-
You're in the queue. Councilmember Wen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been here for the Doyle Report, the U.S. Equities Report, and the AECOM Report. We had been, as a city council, the various city councils, looking at how much we need to spend to renovate this building for 25 years, and the number was always very large. We didn't need this much space, and as time has gone on, we need even less space than we do now. And as Ms. Biggs has said, the requirements for CARF and ADA requirements have increased. I don't have any sentimental attachment to the building. I like it certainly from the outside, but I agree, it's not a good building to work in. And we need to finally make the decision that we are not going to spend the exorbitant amount of money that the engineers that we hired to do the thorough analysis are telling us it's going to cost us. We need to say finally, this building is not appropriate for our Civic Center, and I'm ready to move on from that decision. We've looked at this too many times to look at it anymore.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time. We go back to Councilmember Burns with half a minute left.
I just wanted to say again, if we require, well, before I go into that, can staff say there was community engagement done around this discussion? Can we talk about what that was and, you know, how many meetings we held and just do a quick rundown on that?
We did an open survey that anybody could participate in and gathered information that way. It was actually open for, I think, six to eight weeks. We did a targeted survey that was done based on some demographics, and that was not open to the general public, and we got information back that way. The two surveys actually sort of expressed very similar things.
So when you say targeted, what you're meaning, that was a scientific, that was an effort to do a poll to create a statistically valid model of the community?
Yes, it was, yes. Then we also had four listening sessions. Three of them were in person, of those, one of them was hybrid, and one of those was in Spanish. And then we also did a fully virtual listening session. And so that's how we gathered public feedback on the project.
And do you know about how many people we were engaged in that process?
Shane, do you remember how many people participated in the survey? The open survey was about 750 to 800 people. The targeted survey, I think, was more like 450 people?
I think it was 400, just over 400.
400 people. The listening sessions, the Spanish-speaking listening session had the most attendees. It was both hybrid and in-person, and that had around 30 to 35 attendees. The English-speaking sessions ranged from 10 to 25, including both online and in-person. And generally, the English-speaking sessions were, had a lot of the same people attending them.
So just if we want to update any of these goals, whether it's community engagement goals, or we want new information, I would just love for us to make that plain today at this meeting, make a motion. You know, we don't have to keep going in circles. Make a motion on what you would like to see so that you can see if there's enough support up here, and then we can get that information by the next meeting, because I don't think anybody wants to move quickly at the expense of being thorough. It's just how many times are we going to do this dance until we make a decision? And so I just wanted to say that. I wanted to make sure that everybody understood what we've done so far in terms of engagement, so hopefully that sets up the next comments we'll have in a moment so people can say what we're missing. Thank you, Chair.
Still, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Saffredin with three minutes left.
Thank you. So going back to the original question, you're saying that we would be voting to not return as a Civic Center? Are you also precluding any other municipal use? Is that part of what your proposed vote at the next meeting would be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'm ruling out use of this facility for police and fire headquarters.
Okay.
If that, that's not what you asked, I'm not sure.
Well, you know, I'm glad that you're really feeling yourself here, and you and Daniel are in charge, and you're going to let the residents know what you're going to do with their building. But help me understand why we would do this as a special order of business at our next meeting, rather than, as Alderman Ericara said, use our usual process, have two meetings? I mean, is there an actual reason to do that, or just you want to get this over with? Which is fine, that's an actual reason, too.
I don't think it's necessary to prolong this conversation any longer than it needs to be. What would be an alternative process to a special order of business?
Two hearings, like we do with every other order of business.
But then it comes back to council as a special order of business.
No, it comes back here, there are people in this community who are hearing tomorrow or tonight or whenever they find out that at the next meeting, we are talking about moving out of Civic Center permanently. That's not a new discussion, but they're probably going to have opinions about it. Do you not want to hear their opinions? Are you tired of hearing their opinions? Do you want to just make a decision because you're done listening? What exactly is the advantage doing it as a special order of business rather than putting it on an agenda twice, letting people come and get their opinions?
How does it come back on an agenda?
What I'm saying is-
I think it's going to be a special order of business. If it's, if it's, if it's not next week, or if it's not next meeting, it could be two meetings from now, I'm comfortable with that.
How much time do you want to give people to weigh in? To the point that's been like accurately made, that there's been discussion about this for many years in this town, but why would we feed into the perception that this is a council that has its own agenda and done deals by putting this on the agenda for the next meeting as a special order of business when the same result could be achieved by allowing people some input into this?
If you're- If you'd like to make a friendly amendment, I would-
You do entertain it? I'd appreciate that. But the other thing I want to understand, and I don't know if this is a question for you, Laura, or for Paul, there's nothing, there's no reason to do this because, as it relates to the putting assets to work, it's not like in the putting assets to work process, they aren't already exploring non-government uses for this building. This is more a statement, an assertion by the council that we are certainly not moving back here as a Civic Center. Is that really what would be achieved by voting for this at our next meeting? Help me understand that.
If it's the next meeting, or the meeting after that, or a month from now, that is the decision that I think we've been putting off for 20 years, and I think it's in the best interest of the community and the taxpayers of Evanston that we make the decision final and move forward from here and just acknowledge what we've seen coming for a while, that we hoped might not happen, that we have, you know, left no stone unturned trying to find a way to make it work here. It's just not going to happen. It doesn't make financial sense for the taxpayers, it doesn't make sense for the employees that work here. There are far better options for a variety of reasons, and to prolong the discussion about this Civic Center doesn't do anybody any good.
But isn't the discussion of the Civic Center part of a larger discussion about all of our public buildings? That's part of the putting assets to work process? I mean, I get what you're saying. You're tired of talking about the Civic Center. I understand that. But this is one component of the city's real estate portfolio, right? What, this special order of business at our next meeting, or whichever meeting it would be, all we're doing is saying, we've taken an option off the table for ourselves, but I'm not sure like what has been gained by doing that. Help me understand what we're gaining.
What we're gaining is the bandwidth to allow us to focus on other potential alternative uses for this facility, rather than trying to find a way to have city council move back here, to have the city staff move back here. We've spent a lot of time and energy, staff time, consultant time, consultant money, trying to make that happen. It doesn't make any sense to keep pursuing something that clearly doesn't make sense.
But, all right, so bandwidth is kind of an abstract concept. I guess it really comes down to staff time, which is the purview of the city manager and obviously the directors. Is a vote to decide to not use the Civic Center as the Civic Center create some sort of expansive new amount of staff capability that is being somehow hindered by the idea that the Civic Center may be used as a Civic Center again? I mean, I just don't understand what we're gaining by doing this, other than really, like, I think unnecessarily agitating a lot of people, and I just don't know what the purpose of it is. There's nothing precluding us from looking at all the other options right now.
This is not meant to be a complaint in any way. However, the staff does regularly have to take time to meet with members of the community brought here by one councilperson to repeatedly discuss this building, to give tours of this building, potentially review things that other community members put together to see if that is true, and then try to make it into an apples-to-apples comparison. So it is not, not, I mean, it is taking some staff resources to continue a discussion on this building.
Okay. I'm going to presume I'm not that person, but my guess is that could be rectified without us voting to never come back here. I just don't know what we're opening up, other than ourselves to a lot of criticism about a lack of transparency by doing this. I think it's fairly obvious to anybody who looks at what is being presented, what has been presented, what likely will continue to be presented, as we talk about all of our assets, the likelihood of this building being the Civic Center going forward is low. But if we close the door on it, I don't know that we do anything to improve the likelihood of a better outcome, but I do see the damage that we potentially do to our council and our government standing among the residents that we serve, and I think it's an avoidable mistake, and I don't know that it's worth the, I understand what you're saying, and I think that that can be addressed in a different way. I don't know that what we gain by putting this as a special order of business on our next agenda or a subsequent agenda is worth what it potentially will cost us with credibility in the community when the outcomes are still all available to us, and the likelihood that this will be the Civic Center on the basis of us showing the numbers that it makes sense seems very low anyway. So I just don't think this is worth the damage that it potentially would do, and I heard my little ding-dongs, so.
Which was two minutes after your time.
Yeah, I just don't, I guess, in closing, this is probably not the way to do this if you want to do this, and you don't want to diminish our relationship with the residents that we serve, and that's all I'll say.
Councilmember Revel.
To my mind, the reason to have this discussion and make this decision is, in another week or two, suppose we have some major HVAC catastrophe, and the question will be, well, the city council might come back here, we better fix the HVAC system. Or we've decided we're not coming back here, and so we say we don't need to fix that HVAC system and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on that for that reason. So I guess I see it as allowing us to start to really move forward with what are going to be the realistic options that we're going to consider, and we will reluctantly, because I do like this building, reluctantly say moving back here is not, is not the option that we want to pursue. It's way more expensive than all the other options that we've been hearing about, and if we make that decision, then we don't have to worry about some major HVAC catastrophe that will put us back in a big dilemma about do we fix it or not.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we continue with second opportunities, starting with Councilmember Newsma with a minute and a half left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Saffredin, if you have a friendly amendment, I would entertain it. I think you know that my intent here is not to foreclose public engagement on this question, or I would say continued public engagement on this question, because we indeed have been engaging the public on this, ever since my time on the council and for years before. I think it's time to make the call, and I don't want to postpone the inevitable. I think the downsides of waiting, as Councilmember Revel mentioned, we also don't want this building sitting vacant. You know, if we know we're going to do something different, let's start focusing on the alternative future use and start going down that path sooner rather than later. Put this building back on the tax rolls, contributing to the 5-Fifth TIF, and being a productive part of the community, rather than just kicking the can down the road yet again, which we've been doing for 20 years.
Still, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back for a second opportunity to Councilmember Hadakakis with two and a half minutes left.
So Councilmember Newsma, would you entertain a friendly amendment to have this come as a special order of business for introduction and then having two hearings? Or, because I totally-
I don't think, just want to interject, because I've found Councilmember Saffredin's procedural complaints confusing as well. I can't imagine that this would be an ordinance, so it wouldn't come for introduction. So if you wanted to just delay it, it could be delayed to the first meeting in March, and then we could add a discussion item on February 24th. That would be a way to make it discussed twice at public meetings. But this is not the sort of thing that would typically appear onto agendas because it would not be an ordinance, contrary to Councilmember Saffredin's comments. Go ahead, Councilmember.
So I do see there's value in us making the decision. I think one of the unfortunate narratives has been that staff is telling us what to do in these situations, and realistically, staff has always presented us with all the options and all the information, and I think we have to kind of own it when we make this big decision. So I totally see the value in us voting on it, because otherwise it will just linger. And, but I do feel there is, you know, a lot of value in having a hearing from our constituents, and I don't know, Councilmember Newsma, if you would be open to amending this schedule?
I certainly would, and maybe we can figure out the wording, but maybe next city council meeting, we have a discussion, but not take a vote, we do that at the following meeting.
Do I have to type that up?
No, I mean, so the motion, is there a friendly amendment coming from you, Councilmember?
I guess so.
All right, so Councilmember Hadakakis makes a friendly amendment to create two special orders of business. One, a discussion item on the subject previously mentioned to occur on February 24th, and one, an action item to occur on the same topic on the first regular March meeting, which is, I think I can do this actually. regular March meeting, which is, I think I can do this actually, March 10th. Thanks, Alex. And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Is that the end of your comment, Councilmember Hadekatis? At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time. We begin for third opportunities with Councilmember Kelly with 2:45 left.
Thank you. You know, I just think it has to be stated that this whole process started out with a complete lack of transparency. The train left the station with a big Open Meetings Act violation, and now shoving this through as a special order of business, it just smells bad. I mean, there's no way around it. And by the way, I only, I toured this building once with staff and with other council members, including Councilmember Revel and Wynn. The last time I came with the construction firm, no, I was originally going to be accompanied, and then there was nobody that came with us. So I want to clarify that. Only once, and it was with other council members, did I do a tour of this building. And, you know, I think we should also talk about, this isn't a TIF, and I question that too. I mean, this property, this beautiful property here in North Evanston with homes that are close to a million dollars across the street, this gets sold, it comes off the tax rolls. It goes into the, you know, the TIF fund, but nevertheless, our school districts that are, you know, in need of funding will not be receiving that funding unless we make a special arrangement. So I, you know, that needs to be stated as well. Also, that got rehab, that AECOM did, it was every single bathroom in this place, and we have really lovely new bathrooms. It was way overdone. That estimate, I'm sorry, but we need a second estimate. We need to have more informed, more information on that. I can't say, we own this building. To say it's going to be cheaper for us to move out and potentially, you know, lease another building and worry about maintaining this until it sells and then, again, goes into the TIF, I think this is, there's a lot missing here. Also, we should address the fact that this building is expensive because of the lack of upgrades and maintenance. And if we can't, you know, the issue is about proper upgrades and proper maintenance of our facilities citywide. We don't just sell a building. We get to figure out what's going on, that we aren't able to maintain our buildings properly. That's the number one issue here. What is the issue? That, you know, that it's fallen so far behind that we never got ADA access where we should have had it. All of that, we've just let that go and go, it looks like, so that we could do just this tonight. And now, now we're just going to shove this through. I agree with Councilmember Sufferton. I think this is a terrible look right now. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
At this time, no one whose time has not expired is signed up. So, Councilmember, Councilmember Burns, I'll give you a minute, and Councilmember Sufferton, I'll give you a very generous half-minute.
I just want to point to the transparency first, and this isn't, in any criticism of Councilmember Sufferton, because I'm hearing the same things in the community as well. And, you know, you know, we're on YouTube right now. We are, I think we're, we might be on television still, if that's still a thing. These meetings are publicized, obviously. We have a free and active media. I don't know why folks are acting like we're in a part of the world where, like, that's, like, everything is getting pushed out. That, in fact, the last time somebody called me about this, it was literally after maybe the roundtable, whoever wrote something about this, and they called me like, oh, thanks for the update. Like, people are aware that this is happening. We've been talking about it for months, maybe even well over a year now at this point. So I disagree with the idea that this hasn't been transparent. It's been incredibly transparent, in addition to the public meetings that were held, and you just heard the numbers that we got at those meetings. Let's not discount the people that participated in them. A transparent process. So again, I just, I don't know where that's coming from. And if we need more, let's say what it is. How many more people do we need to talk to? We're not advocates. We're council members. Make a motion and say, I would like us to go from 400 to 1,000 people. At least we've had, we would have direction. And then that brings me to why I think it's important to make a move on this. We need clear direction. We're supposed to be providing leadership, not political rhetoric. We have to make a decision. We have to be, provide clear direction to lead this community forward. And that's what I would love to see. A few more notes, I know I'm probably over...
You're way over.
But this is important. It talked about the TIF. The school districts are getting money now. We've successfully negotiated TIF agreements with both school districts in the 5/5th TIF. And, 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 and the last thing I'll say is, you know, because I hear this a lot from one person in particular, where it's like, oh, but the money is, it's going to the TIF. It's not going to, and I'm only saying this because I saw this headline, it's not like the TIF money is going to tax consulting in a foreign country. It's going to Evanston residents. Like, literally, the 5/5th TIF is to help people stay in Evanston who can't afford it. That's what the money is going towards. So I just, I don't want you to be confused by the political rhetoric up here as if it's going off to some other country or other cause that's not serving Evanston residents. It's not the case. And it just frustrates me every time I hear that. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Oh, one, one second. Point of clarity. The, this is not on the tax rolls because it's a municipal use. So if it goes back onto the tax rolls but in a TIF, you really haven't lost any tax income.
Understood. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Chair. I think, listening to all of my teammates, I think what we have to do, I think Councilmember Burns, you're correct. We've been transparent. But now a call to make a serious decision has been made, and I do think we have to allow people time for that. We've gone back and forth. We've never said, we're done. And that is what I'm hearing this evening. So for me, because in the second ward, I have a contingency, we can't do anything right, and nothing is transparent. And they do care about this building. I care about the building, but I wasn't elected to care for the building. I was elected to care for the city. So I do think us having a few more discussions with the impetus of, we're done talking about it, how do people feel about that? I think that's what's important. We're done. Please come give us feedback about that, and we move forward. And, and really listen and pull that data out. And I know that takes more staff time. I think I'm willing to commit a ward meeting to that, where we just talk about that, people in the second ward give me feedback. But if we're going to make that declaration that we're done, we need to weigh in on that, not all the different things that we see here. So that's where my struggle is and where I stand with this. So, thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time, so Councilmember Sufferton, 30 seconds.
Real quick, so we have a March meeting where we're going to do Envision and the civic center in the same meeting? Or what, what is this proposed schedule? March 12th is when we'll be talking about the civic center?
10th.
Okay, March 10th. And then, when does Envision come?
I think at this, at this time, that's not clear.
Okay. Whenever, okay. Just, I guess, everybody be ready, resident-wise. I mean, I do think, I'll be real quick, to Councilmember Harris's point, if you're a resident who sees update on civic center, and please fire headquarters relocation feasibility study, you're like, oh, there'll be some graphs, and you look at the packet. And then you find out next week, or next meeting, they're getting rid of it. And I think that's a concern. Even if that's not exactly what's happening, that's a perception that we can beat, even though I know we are on YouTube and this is all broadcast, but like, just, let's be mindful of the whiplash effect that this could have on residents, whether or not it's the right decision, which it very well seems to be. People don't like that. Just throwing it out there.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Harris with 3:30 left.
Thank you. And this will be very brief. Excuse me. Just for the record, Councilmember Kelly and I will not be here March 10th. We are attending a city, a national legal city, so we, we will attend virtually, but we will not be at the day. So I wanted people to know that in advance for the March 10th.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first, second, or a third time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with 30 seconds left.
So we can't deny that there's been a lack of transparency around this. I'm sorry, and I know we're being broadcast, but, you know, when I got, the JLL contract was signed by JLL back in May of '23, before it even came to us in closed session. I didn't even know, we didn't even know staff was out there working on that. Why was that going on? We never had a discussion about even moving and renting the civic center. And it came to us in closed session in, in October, and then we were found in violation because we moved forward with that without any public discussion. Somehow, that did, that train that left in total darkness. Nobody knew that we were, right now, having our staff with our tax dollars, working out an arrangement with JLL to find a place to rent. So I just want to say that this has not been transparent, and we need to own that. And until we can start owning our mistakes around transparency, there's not really hope for improvement. And, and it concerns me that we always just try to justify it. Well, no, it really was transparent. It wasn't. And, and it concerns me that we, that, you know, there isn't some ownership of that. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll? The motion made by Councilmember Hadekatis was to create two special orders of business, one to discuss this item on February 24th, and then one to have an action item before the council on March 10th.
Can I make a motion, a substitute motion? Is that, may I make? Okay. So I'd like to offer a substitute motion to have two meetings of discussion without it being a special order of action, just like we had tonight, just two discussion items about permanently, you know, moving out of this, as opposed to action items for special order of business.
I don't think, I mean, there's a city council rule that provides for making a motion to create a special order of business. That's why this motion occurred. I don't think there's, I don't know that you can create...
As a discussion item.
So your motion is to change Councilmember Hadekatis's motion so that the March 10th special order of business is in fact a discussion item?
Correct, not an action item.
Okay. The motion fails for lack of a second. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against the motion carries, and so we'll have agenda items, one for discussion and one potentially for action on our next two council meetings. I just wanted to reiterate something that I said, I believe at our previous meeting, which is that I think we have a procurement code for a good reason, and I think we need to improve our procurement code and tighten the rules. I think that the reason the government procurement law is so detailed is specifically because elected officials steering contracts toward their preferred contractors is a really serious danger zone. And I just would implore everybody up here to wash themselves and not engage in that activity. I think it's, that's where unethical behavior really occurs. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Well, everyone has their email public comment. I will not spend more time on that. But just as a reminder, the municipal, the 2025 consolidated municipal election is April 1st. We do not have a primary this time around, which changes our calendar a bit. So voter registration, the last day of online voter registration would be March 16th. The first day of early voting will be March 17th. The last day to request a mail-in ballot, including military and overseas, for overseas voters, would be March 27th. And the last day of early voting would be March 31st. The last day for mail-in ballots that can be postmarked would be April 1st. And election day would also be April 1st. And just as a reminder, and there's been communication about this through our newsletter and other, thank you, I think Roundtable covered it, the election will be here at the civic center, 2100 Ridge, in the same room as it's been since I've been here. Okay? So before that, I don't know. So G300, that is expected to be the same as always. We have amazing election judges. So just as a reminder, there is no primary. So April 1st is it. So a lot of you are used to coming for the primary and then for the general. There's only a general election April 1st. There's also been communication, I know on the Roundtable, I saw an article, about redistricting. Our communications department sent out information about redistricting. If you're going to look up who your new council member or your new ward area will be, we urge you to look that up on the Cook County Clerk's website, on your, look up your voter information using our, and there's also a special redistricting GIS map that the city has put out there. People affected by redistricting will receive a postcard. People not affected by redistricting will not receive a postcard. The reason is, if you're not affected, your ward is the same. And we will reserve all municipal tax dollars for the people who are affected, and we will notify them. If you feel otherwise, feel free to email me at cityclerk@cityofevanston.org. And that is it for election information and redistricting information. If you have any questions about redistricting, please email the clerk's office at cityclerk@cityofevanston.org. And, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This evening, there are very close to exactly 45 people here, so each comment will be one minute. We begin, as always, with this gold piece of paper. The first person speaking will be Kitanya Robertson, followed by Rosa Villasenor, and then Veronica Reyes.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Kitanya Robertson. I live in Evanston 5th Ward, and I worked for Compass Starbucks at Northwestern University for eight years. I am currently a student myself at Hurson University and a single mother of two boys, ages 12 and 9. In 2018, when Compass Group took over, it was a very stressful time for me and my coworkers. We were told that we would have to reapply for our jobs. I can't go through that again, especially with two fast-growing boys. The Work Retention Ordinance will make sure, no matter who Northwestern picks as a contractor, our jobs would be secure. I can continue the path of being a great mother, a successful student, and a hard-working staff for the Northwestern family. The Work Retention Ordinance also helps ensure workers at Northwestern, especially the ones residing in Evanston, maintain their employment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rosa Villasenor, followed by Veronica Reyes, and then Dan Abraham.
Mi nombre es Rosa Villasenor. Vivo en el distrito 4 de Evanston. He trabajado en el Allen Center de la Universidad Northwestern durante 15 años.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Villasenor. I live in Evanston's 4th Ward. I have worked at the Allen Center at Northwestern University for 15 years.
Cuando el empleador cambió a Compass Group en el 2018 fue algo terrible. Sabía que si perdía mi trabajo, no podría ayudar a pagar los gastos universitarios de uno de mis hijos. Durante esa transacción hubo muchas noches en las que no podía dormir porque estaba muy asustada.
When the employer changed to Compass Group in 2018, it was awful. I knew that if I lost my job, I couldn't help pay for one of my child's college expenses. During that transition, there were many nights I couldn't sleep because I was so scared.
Ahora nuevamente estoy pasando por lo mismo que en el 2018. Tengo una hija en la universidad y necesito pagar sus estudios. Este año ha sido muy difícil porque Allen Center cerró. Nuevamente nos enfrentamos a un futuro incierto.
Now, again, I am facing the same situation as in 2018. My daughter is now in university, and I need to pay for her studies. This year has been very difficult because the Allen Center closed, and again, we face an uncertain future.
Si Northwestern cambia de contratistas otra vez, podría echarme a la calle. No importa quién sea el contratista. Meresco seguir trabajando en el campus que he llamado mi hogar durante tantos años. La ordenanza ayudará a protegernos. Espero contar con su apoyo. Gracias.
If Northwestern changes contractors again, I could be kicked to the curb. No matter who the contractor is, I deserve to continue working at the campus I have called home for so many years. The Worker Retention Ordinance will help protect us. I hope we can count on your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Veronica Reyes, who will be followed by Dan Abraham, and then Eric Passit.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Veronica Reyes. I have been in Evanston residence for 25 years and live in Ward 2. I have worked at Northwestern University... I have worked at Northwestern University 15 years. As a food service and hospitality workers, we don't just serve the students. We often become their family, especially for students who feel lonely or sad being away from home. The students are what I love most about my job. When Compass took over in 2018, it was very stressful. We have to fight to make sure we wouldn't be fired. I worry that if I lost my job, we couldn't lose our, we could lose our home. My stomach was in knots for months. I don't want to go through this again. The work retention ordinance will make sure we keep our jobs, no matter who the contractor is. I hope you will support this ordinance. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Abraham, who will be followed by Eric Passit, and then Tricia Connolly.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Dan Abraham. I live at 725 Neuse Street in Evanston's 1st Ward. I'm also an organizing director for Unite Here Local One, the union representing subcontracted hospitality and food service employees at Northwestern University. I speak tonight in support of ordinance 21-0-25, the worker retention ordinance. I'm proud to live in a city that's big enough to include not only Northwestern University professors and administrators, but also subcontracted Northwestern University housekeepers, cooks, and dishwashers. They aren't, there aren't too many places like that. Every year, it gets less and less affordable for those housekeepers, cooks, and dishwashers to live here. I remember only a couple of years before the pandemic when the university decided to change contractors, and contracted employees asked me, "Am I getting fired?" Those workers organized together and saved their jobs, and only for that day. Today, there is still no guarantee that people who have worked for an employer for years or decades will not be gone tomorrow. Not because of some misconduct on their part, but simply because they lack a simple protection under the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eric Passit, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Julia Ferguson.
Hi, I'm Eric Passit. I'm the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos, and I'm also resident of the 4th Ward. And I'm here to speak against the Healthy Building Ordinance. And something I wanted to bring up is that, and I'm not trying to single you out, you know, Councilmember Harris, but you said in the last meeting that we're trying to make, we keep on preaching affordability, yet this Healthy Building Ordinance is the exact opposite of that. Now, I know we've made some revisions. It's, it's still way too vague. We're going to make up the rules as we go along. Well, I've been part of those tax forces, and the public has never really heard and never really a part of the decision. It's, I feel like it's more displacating for the most part. I felt years ago, that was totally different, but not today. So, you know, as a landlord and as a property management, you know, what I'm telling owners to do is stay away from Evanston and not invest in Evanston until this is decided. I beg of you to put this aside until a later day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Julia Ferguson, and then Ruth DeBono.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tricia Connolly. I'm a board member of the Community Alliance for Better Government, and I'm speaking on behalf tonight of our organization regarding the Workers' Retention Ordinance. There have been conversations about the inability, inability of people to stay in Evanston. These discussions have been centered on housing. However, it is utmost importance that we see how the intersection of employment can be integral to people's ability to stay. We strongly encourage each of you to stand with these hospitality, food service, and janitorial workers. By strengthening our ordinance, the city sends an impactful message that change to a contractor will not disrupt a worker's job. Lastly, although we'd be the first municipality in Illinois to pass this, several cities around the country have already done so. Let's join that list. Solidarity with Unite One and all the workers here in Evanston and around the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Julia Ferguson, who will be followed by Ruth DeBono, and then Kira Embler.
Hi, I'm Julia Ferguson. I'm a student at Northwestern. In his letter sent to the Roundtable today, Northwestern President Schill expressed concern that the HBO is designed to provide frame, that, excuse me, sorry. President Schill expressed concern that the HBO would be passed before, quote, "conducting the broader community engagement, detailed audits, and independent assessments," unquote. The HBO is designed to provide framework for public collaboration. Updates to language in the ordinance will mean Northwestern and stakeholders will get to chart out their own building compliance paths, have wiggle room to shift deadlines and goalposts, and be part of the rulemaking. Northwestern was not at the table for one year's worth of stakeholder meetings, and I would like them to be transparent about this. As a member of Fossil Free Northwestern, we are calling on Evanston residents, students, and staff at Northwestern to sign and support our petition. We are calling for full emissions and sustainability transparency, a plan for a fully renewable electricity transition, and transition to a renewable central utility plant. Our resolution in support of the petition passed through the Associated Student Government last week, and it shows there's broad student support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ruth DeBono, who will be followed by Kira Embler, and then Paula Schul.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono. I'm a student at Northwestern, and I'm here to speak in support of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. As a student at Northwestern, I know that we have a unique position to ensure that our university is having a positive impact within the city of Evanston. The Healthy Buildings Ordinance is not only an opportunity to make sure that the city of Evanston takes the necessary action in the face of the climate crisis, but also that the Northwestern plays their part in this local climate action. Just recently, the university released the 2022-2023 Greenhouse Emissions Report. This is one important step in Northwestern providing the transparency they owe to both the Northwestern and Evanston community. There is still missing greenhouse gas reports and sustainability reports, and a general lack of transparency, but this proves that the pressure put on the institution does work. Northwestern has a large impact on the emissions of the city of Evanston, and the action required by the Healthy Buildings Ordinance would require the university to take action to actually lower these emissions. The university can and will take necessary action when the community demands it, and we encourage the council to pass the Healthy Buildings Ordinance in the Northwestern and Evanston community to continue engaging in these issues and holding the institution accountable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kira Embler, who will be followed by Paula Schul, and then Marty Klebs.
Hi, I'm Kira. I'm a member of Fossil Free Northwestern, and I'm here to speak in support of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. As a Northwestern student, I'm worried about the recent statements from my university that aim to delay or co-opt this ordinance. Northwestern's inability to consistently release a sustainability and emissions report and their lack of receptivity to student and faculty voices has shown that they are not committed to addressing the climate crisis in the ways that they have promised us. It is abundantly clear that Northwestern is not afraid to invest heavily in development projects and renovation, but clearly, that investment doesn't extend to concrete climate actions such as the HBO. Given this, we would strongly discourage the proposed delay of this ordinance. Northwestern has an important opportunity to join with city efforts and has the means to make a strong, positive impact in the city. It is clear that Northwestern had and will have ample opportunity to include themselves in the implementation of this ordinance, and the nature of the climate crisis means that ordinances such as these must pass without delay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Paula Schul, who will be followed by Marty Klebs, and then Dan Skirmerhorn.
Hi, Paula Schul, 9th Ward, speaking to the question about why we would pass the HBO before the rulemaking is done. The reason is, we want to ensure that the rulemaking is done publicly and also to define the authority and scope and responsibilities and limits of these two rulemaking bodies and city staff that would be set up by the ordinance. This would ensure that powerful interests can't dominate or scuttle the process. And without the quarterly reporting and the mandated technical expertise and the overall governance in the ordinance, I'm afraid the rulemaking might never get done. And the revised language that you have in the package tonight requires city council to come back and review and amend the ordinance when the rulemaking is done and have the opportunity to make whatever changes come out of that detailed process. Cost affordability and complexity are other real concerns about the ordinance, and we understand that. However, any building that can show reasonable difficulty with technical or financial feasibility can apply for an alternative compliance pathway that will not be unreasonably rejected. So the only real requirement of this ordinance, difficult as it is, is that buildings submit a plan and then back up their plan with facts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Marty Klebs, who will be followed by Dan Skirmerhorn, and then Steve Test.
Hi, my name's Marty Klebs. I live in the 4th Ward. I'm a volunteer board member with the Citizens Utility Board, which is known as CUB for short. CUB supports the Healthy Building Ordinance because it represents the first step in a managed transition away from gas over the next few decades. Gas is far too expensive due to a volatile supply market and aggressive spending by Nikor Gas. Evanston's gas utility has more than doubled delivery rates by winning four rate hikes since 2018. And it will get even worse. Nikor has filed for yet another state record increase that would push its total rate hikes to $1 billion in just six years. With climate change getting worse and state climate goals in place, building owners risk pouring more money into a gas-based system heading towards extinction. The most expensive option facing building owners is to do nothing. The Healthy Buildings Ordinance helps them make a cost-effective, long-term plan for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Skirmerhorn, who will be followed by Steve Test, and then Jack Jordan.
Good evening, my name is Dan Skirmerhorn. With Skirmerhorn and Company, we manage a number of properties here in Evanston that are subject to the Healthy Building Ordinance. While there have been a number of changes made to the proposal, what still remains unanswered is the cost. And it's really not just the cost of doing the work, it's the cost of relocating residents. It's the cost of diminished values and therefore, real estate revenues to the city of Evanston to pay for what needs to be paid for for the schools and for the community buildings themselves. So it seems to me we need to get these rules in place and get this process more clarity so that we understand what we're up against, because those of us who work in the private sector can't work under the guise of, "We'll figure that out later." Our banks are not going to lend money to properties at the current values with this hanging over their head as an unknown huge cost of compliance. So I think we need to spend more time to develop the rules and get this done in the years' time that we have before the grant expires so that we all know what we're up against and we all know what it's going to cost us and what it's going to cost our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Steve Test, who will be followed by Jack Jordan, and then Bella Philstrup.
Steve Test, 1135 Hinman Avenue. When my neighbors and I discovered how bad the envisioned 2045 zoning plan was, we dug into the draft comprehensive plan and found it deficient and potentially damaging to the city. We shouldered our way into the rewriting process by getting Sarah Flax, she's not here, to copy our voluminous comments. Go to city staff working on the rewrite. I sent you a copy of those comments today. We hope we are being heard. We'll see when the draft comes out. But why did we have to push our way into the process? Why didn't the city throw open its doors when the draft came out and take it out to the neighborhoods? Why haven't there been neighborhood reading sessions, town halls, to gather feedback? Real robust community engagement on the draft? Are you afraid of what the citizens of Evanston might say when they really understand what's in there? The comprehensive plan is a document for and paid for by the citizens of Evanston. It's not just for the city council, the mayor, or the city staff, or developers. Slow down, really engage the public, and work with us to produce a document we can be proud of and united behind. Take the time to do the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jack Jordan, who will be followed by Bella Philstrup, and then Jessica Miller.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I'm here this evening not as a representative of Climate Action Evanston, but as an alumni and donor of Northwestern University. And as an alum and a donor, I can't tell you how embarrassed and ashamed I am of the university's recent tactics in relation to the proposed Healthy Buildings Ordinance. I would describe Northwestern's tactics and official communications to this council as disingenuous misinformation at best. And that goes for President Schill's offer to collaborate in a letter that was published today in the Roundtable. If you think I'm biased, I just look at the comments section of that article. I counted at least a dozen other people who shared similar opinions just since this morning. And I think all of those commenters know what we know in this room, that this is just the latest in a pattern of behavior from Northwestern. And again, I am here because I'm an alum, I'm a proud supporter of Northwestern, but I fear that if this level of misinformation is commonplace in the relatively low-stakes environment of a public newspaper, what about a higher-stakes environment such as, I don't know, congressional testimony? What will Northwestern do then? And so I don't speak to Northwestern staff here, I don't even speak to President Schill. I speak to the Board of Trustees. And I implore you, I even beg of you as an alum, to get your act together before you cause any more harm to the reputation of our beloved institution. And if you're a student, a faculty member, I urge you to speak up as well. Thank you, council members and mayor. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bella Philstrup, who will be followed by Jessica Miller, and then Bill Springer.
Good evening, council. My name is Bella Philstrup, and I'm a junior at Northwestern University studying environmental science and policy in a part of Runon-Kymment. I'm here today to thank you for your work on the Healthy Building Ordinance and express my strong support for its passage. This week, a lot has happened, and thanks to the hard work of countless people the schools districts have signed on in support of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. This is huge. Another important point is looking at the public health perspective of the HBO, which is vital. While the Green Building Ordinance primarily addressed residential properties and contributed to reducing childhood asthma rates by limiting the installation of gas does, the HBO focuses on larger-scale environmental impacts. Heat waves, which are already a concern in the Chicago area, are expected to worsen with climate change. These events can have devastating effects, particularly on residents who cannot afford air conditioning. By reducing the likelihood and severity of such events, the HBO has the potential to save lives and improve public health outcomes, especially for our most vulnerable and low-income people. I thank you so much for listening, and please vote in favor of the Healthy Building Ordinance.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jessica Miller, who will be followed by Bill Springer, and then Sharon Perino.
Hello, Jessica Miller, second word. The federal government has abdicated any responsibility to address the climate crisis. Parents like me are scared about the world our children will inherit. The power to take bold action and give us some hope falls to local governments, to you all sitting here. Yes, the HBO will require big building owners to take some action, but not action that compromises businesses, or our schools, or vulnerable renters. Rather, it will require them to make a plan to reduce emissions and stick to it. Members of council raised concerns about this bill's impact on low-income renters. That is the right concern, and that is why the HBO includes alternative compliance pathways. So building owners who cannot comply through the traditional route, whether due to technical or financial reasons, can work with the city to do what they can, when they can, to make progress without hurting their tenants. The HBO will help our community work together to make our buildings better, healthier, and keep energy costs down. Let's do our part. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bill Springer, who will be followed by Sharon Perino, and then Mike Purcell.
Hi, I'm Bill Springer. I've worked in renewable energy finance for about 20 years. I sent a novella, I mean, an email to you guys this weekend of laying out some financing options, so I'm not going to repeat those. But what I am going to say is, many places have already done this program. There weren't, we haven't seen them go out of business. We haven't seen every, every building close down. Why? Because hundreds of billions of dollars have been put into renewable green energy. Most of them because they were for money-making. This is a profitable investment. Will it be costly for some people? Yes. There will definitely be cost. But there are millions and millions of dollars that will be invested here. Property values will go up, the health of people will go up. You'll have so many other benefits that aren't considered. I'm not going to try and do the math of it. I mean, I might get a failing grade from the professor here, but truthfully, you cannot consider the cost without also considering the large benefit that would come from the investments. I'm also here, I'm also on the EEC Board of Wilmont. I'm not here in that role, but I will tell you that we are in communication with everybody, including Evanston across the North Shore. All these programs, all these things are going to happen in every state, and I think there's in every community, and I think Evanston needs to take the lead here.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sharon Perino, who will be followed by Mike Purcell, and then Anne Head.
Mayor Bis, council members. I'm Sharon Perino from Evanston's 4th Ward. I'm here to talk to you about sidewalk pedestrian safety in the Business District. On Thursday, October 24th of last year, I took a field trip to Wheaton, Illinois to speak with Lieutenant Greg Klaus of the Wheaton Police Department. We discussed Wheaton's Walk Your Wheels program that has successfully reduced sidewalk use of bikes, scooters, skateboards, and rollerblades by whopping 80%. This is how they accomplished it. The Wheaton Police Department made a public service announcement that went out to social media sites such as Facebook, TikTok, Twitter. Secondly, sandwich board signs were placed on all the corners of Downtown Business District. Third, next, the police started issuing warning tickets. A few weeks later, the police wrote tickets that ranged from 30 A few weeks later, the police wrote tickets that ranged from $35 to $70, depending on the offense. What Evanston is doing presently is ineffective. This dismount sticker is the size of a postage stamp, and as it is displayed, Superman with his x-ray vision would be hard-pressed to see these stickers. Our state law prohibits writing on sidewalks and Business Districts. We also have a well-defined and detailed City Ordinance 10-9 which states the same. Anyone interested in reviewing this presentation in its entirety, please scan the displayed QR code.
Thank you very much. And you can bring it up here and we'll pass it. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Purcell, who will be followed by Anne Head and then Jexa Edinburgh.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I just have a few thoughts regarding the proposed HBO tonight. Thank you to the committee who's put a lot of work and effort. I think a lot of us have gotten educated over these last few weeks or months regarding some of the discussion topics here. At the core, this ordinance is very complex at many levels, and it will have a financial, significant financial impact on both building owners, stakeholders, as well as tenants. Some of the financial numbers that are initially been thrown out are staggering. And, you know, the truth is, there's much to consider as it relates to tenants of properties that are affected. What I'm proposing, and what we've been discussing, is what is the matter with vetting out the details of such an important ordinance first, as opposed to passing the ordinance and figuring out the details later? It just appears that the order is wrong as it relates to such an important ordinance. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Anne Head, who will be followed by Jexa Edinburgh and then Eleanor Granstrom. Is Anne Head no longer here? If not, we'll move ahead, oh. If not, we'll move ahead with Jexa Edinburgh, who will be followed by Eleanor Granstrom and then, sorry, my glasses, Isabella Franconess.
Hi, my name is Jexa Edinburgh, and I am the Hub Coordinator at E-Town Sunrise, and I'm also a senior at ETHS. And the students of Evanston want this Healthy Buildings Ordinance to pass. The HBO is necessary for us to meet the climate goals we have already set. Students, if you're feeling hopeless, the best way is to deal with that is to turn it into action. We need you to help push for this. I don't want to keep growing up in a world that keeps giving up and not taking action. We are not just pushing for this change, but for an accelerated pace towards reaching our goals and setting an example nationwide. This needs to pass as soon as possible without delaying and delaying and delaying. We can't keep procrastinating on vital policies that keep us from catastrophe. How many meetings has this been delayed at already? The ordinance doesn't go into effect immediately. We already have benchmarking, this is just the next step. Evanston's logo has a lighthouse. Let's be a beacon to other communities around the nation and beyond and pass this ordinance tonight for the future health and safety from climate catastrophe of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eleanor Granstrom, and I apologize, I'm not, I don't, I'm not thinking of bringing the next name correctly, but Isabella Franconess or Franconess, followed by Olin Wilson Thomas.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Granstrom, and I'm the Outreach Coordinator of E-Town Sunrise and a student at ETHS and Second Ward resident. For the past couple weeks, every time I've opened my phone to another news notification about the various executive orders threatening my future rights, whether it be my long-time health, safety, or freedom, what I've thought of is the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. It has been the thing that I think of, my kind of metaphorical lifeline, if you will, in all of this stress. It's been my main and most tangible source of hope. Even if I understand the concerns this council and other Evanstonians may hold about this ordinance, I'm terrified that pushing it back will cause it to fade out and eventually disappear. The rulemaking progress will even actually include more public engagement if it passes after the ordinance is passed. I see no reason to continue advocating for the delay of this ordinance unless your true goal is to get rid of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Isabella Franconeri, who will be followed by Olin Wilson Thomas and then Jennifer Gier.
Hello, my name is Izzy. I'm a junior at ETHS with E-Town Sunrise and a student board member of Climate Action Evanston. In the op-ed Northwestern President Schill published to the Roundtable yesterday, he mentioned District 202 having concerns about the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. We've actually been in contact with the ETHS superintendent in the past week, and I'd like to make it known that District 202 is now in full support of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance with its new amendments. In light of recent federal action, we understand why schools are worried about their budgets. ETHS is a notably progressive school in a fraction of the community it serves. ETHS has decided to stand alongside their students in face of attacks on immigrant students, free speech, and the vague net of quote-unquote woke DEI. As a result, ETHS may be facing a cut of $4 million annually in federal funds. The administration is willing to make this sacrifice because it's the right thing to do for their students, staff, and all of Evanston. Their position on sustainability is the same. Dealing with the climate crisis is not a can we can keep kicking down the road. Already, implementation of ETHS's already pre-existing sustainability measures have saved the taxpayer over $350,000 and resulted in a 35% reduction in electricity use since 2018. If a public high school can make the right, the great choice to stand with their students and community members, even if it will tighten their budgets, then Northwestern, a private university with a $15 billion endowment, can certainly do the same. I implore Northwestern to put their money where their mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Olin Wilson Thomas, who will be followed by Jennifer Gier and then Oralia Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Olin, and I'm a Ninth Ward resident. I'm here to speak in support of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. This plan was not brought about with ill intentions towards property owners, renters, or businesses. This plan is meant to ensure that large buildings follow proven and effective ways to combat climate change while providing reliable heating and cooling. The ordinance is designed to phase out fossil-fuel-powered heating and cooling systems when they would be due for replacement anyway. The ordinance also includes a framework for alternative compliance that encourages the city and building owners to work together as partners, not adversaries. After the amendments made following input from building owners and other large stakeholders, those that still oppose the Healthy Buildings Ordinance, especially those with $15 billion in their bank account, have disingenuous intentions and are not interested in helping Evanston meet its climate goals. Nycor, Northwestern, and others, with their supposedly climate-conscious and well-meaning climate appeals, are asking you to put their money ahead of our climate goals. We have made the mistake of prioritizing private capital over climate change many times. Let's not do it again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jennifer Gier, who will be followed by Oralia Martinez and then Gladys Vergara.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Gier. I live in the Third Ward. I'm here to speak in support of the Workers' Retention Ordinance. I believe that it demonstrates our commitment to members of our community and acknowledges that hard-working people should have stability. When I studied at Northwestern, I adored our food service and custodial workers. They regularly brightened my day and helped to support and encourage my undergraduate students, so I want them to see an Evanston that's a reliable place to work. I view that as an extension of us being an inclusive city, and I applaud the city for considering the first-of-its-kind policy.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Oralia Martinez, who will be followed by Gladys Vergara and then John Kennedy. Is Oralia Martinez no longer here? If so, we'll move ahead with Gladys Vergara, who will be followed by John Kennedy and then Frank Hill. Is Gladys Vergara no longer here? If so, we'll move ahead with John Kennedy, who will be followed by Frank Hill and then Roger Williams.
Good evening, council. John Kennedy, Third Ward. Jonathan Newsma mentioned that no stone was unturned looking at the Civic Center issues. I beg to differ. In fact, the city has actively pushed against picking up some stones and looking at them. In January last year, Claire Kelly, Councilmember Kelly, and myself met with Laura Biggs, Paul Zanikowski, and Luke Stowe. We decided at the meeting to pull in groups like the Design Evanston and other contractors in a design-build concept to see if we can get better estimates. Not a $60 million gut job, but partial rehab. Two weeks later, after agreement, I got an email from Luke saying, "We can't do this. Sorry." October of this year, I met with Steve Ruger, along with Elliot Dunick. Again, two weeks later, "Sorry, we can't do it." This council is not getting the information that will save us money over the long term. And this letter that Gary Kelly got was the first step. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Frank Hill, who will be followed by Roger Williams and then Carlos Sutton.
My name is Frank Hill. I'm a single-family homeowner in the Seventh Ward. I'm in favor of adoption of the new IHO, and the IHO should be applied to all multi-unit developments. I also support Envision Evanston's rezoning for density throughout the city. At the same time as rezoning, many tools above and beyond the IHO need to be developed to address our affordable housing crisis, especially the lack of ownership opportunities for moderate-income households. One of our frequently stated values in Evanston is diversity, and, sorry, the narrative of diversity is part of why we moved to Evanston. Meanwhile, we are losing both racial and economic diversity due to a lack of affordable housing. Our black population is down from 22.5% in 2000 to less than 15% today. We, especially we affluent, white, single-family homeowners, need to align our policy positions with our stated values. True diversity in our city and our neighborhoods will require a diversity of housing stock and pricing throughout Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Roger Williams, who will be followed by Carlos Sutton and then Jack Darin.
My name is Roger Williams. I'm a Realtor here in Evanston. I believe the legalizing of the development of multi-unit structures such as duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes throughout all the wards in Evanston is good for the greater good of Evanston residents. However, this development might lead to the displacement of Evanston's low-income and moderate-income residents. This displacement can be reduced by expanding the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Following our five revisions, I recommend we make to the Exclusionary Housing Ordinance. Number one, the IHO should be applied with equal force to both rental and ownership developments. Number two, the IHO should require the development of 20% affordable or sub-market-rate units for all new construction and developments. Number three, the IHO should require 15% affordable units for rehab projects. Number four, the IHO should apply to all multi-unit attached developments with no minimum requirements. Number five, owner-occupied renovation and owner-occupied new multi-developments should be exempt from the IHO. I believe these revisions to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance will provide maximum affordable housing and at the same time reduce the displacement of lower and moderate-income Evanston residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Carlos Sutton, who will be followed by Jack Darin.
Good evening, Mayor, City Clerk, members of the City Council. I stand to make comments this evening on Item A16, Ordinance 20-025 for introduction. There are many significant citizens in this community that feel Harley-Clark is a unique contribution to Evanston and not a white elephant sucking the resources out from the city. It should have a lease that should include citizen access to the facilities without interfering with the lessor's ability to have his events two or three at a weekend. I suggest that the negotiations with Celadon Construction Corporation include a written provision guaranteeing citizens' access for not-for-profit organizations. I recommend you include the provisions that have already been recognized by a referendum passed by Evanston citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jack Darin.
Good evening. Jack Darin, resident of the Ninth Ward. I've been here the last couple of meetings speaking in favor of the HBO, so tonight I just want to say thanks for everyone who's really leaned into this conversation. I think it's really led to a lot of good refinements to it. I think now we know that this is going to work for our school districts, that centering affordability has got to be a really key part of how we implement this, and that the council is really going to have oversight ultimately over those key implementation decisions. So hopefully, this is now ready for approval soon and ready for Evanston to show the kind of leadership that is needed now more than ever. So thanks.
Thank you very much. That is the end of this sheet of paper, so we now move to...
I did call from home and make an arrangement to come.
Right, so that is the end of this sheet of paper. We now move to those who signed up remotely to speak. And so we'll begin with Beth Cerny, who will be followed by Kirby Kaiser, and then Tom Is Beth Cerny in the room? If not, we'll move ahead with Kirby Kaiser, who will be followed by Tom Colleton and then Matt Cotter. Is Kirby Kaiser in the room? If not, we'll move ahead with Tom Colleton, who will be followed by Matt Cotter and then Jerry Walsh.
Can I have their time?
You cannot.
Was worth a try. Good evening, members of the council and Mayor Bis. I thank you again for allowing me to speak today, and I will echo Jack Darin's comments of, "It is good that you are all debating this." However, we are still in opposition as the Clean Energy Choice Coalition, a 501(c)(6) to this ordinance. Obviously, we have had multiple changes, which consistently actually should probably show that this ordinance is not ready for prime time. When you consistently keep changing for every meeting hoping to try to get something accomplished, it would be best to go into that room, take a longer process, try to come up with things instead of haphazardly throwing everything to a wall. We still also, at the chamber meeting on Friday, heard that even the Rotary Building that has gone fully electric has having issues with ComEd just to try to update their infrastructure within their own building. They have said ComEd has been difficult to work with. So I think you can see that that is another piece on this. But thank you all again for your time. Thank you for your energy and putting into this, and I would ask if you could delay this till you get the rulemaking together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome back to Evanston. The next speaker is, oh, did I pass you up before?
No.
No, all right. So the next speaker then is Matt Cotter.
No, I'm Kirby Kaiser.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so the next speaker is Kirby Kaiser, who will be followed then by Matt Cotter and then Jerry Walsh.
Hi, I'm Kirby Kaiser. I support, you know, climate change and I know, you know, climate action. I understand that that needs to happen. I'm concerned about the HBO as it's written because I don't understand the carve-out for condominium associations. I do not see any need for this carve-out other than, you know, you're afraid to upset the current condo owners. A condo building is no different than an apartment building, it has exactly the same environmental impact. The only difference is the ownership structure. This ordinance will put a burden on reducing greenhouse gases in Evanston only on renters, where condo owners will reap the benefits but not have to contribute to the reduction. In many situations, renters will have to move out of their apartments for this retrofit, and this will be done by apartment owners who will then upgrade the apartments and make them more expensive. This will displace renters while condo owners will be unaffected. This ordinance should be applied the same to all residents of Evanston, not just the renters.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Matt Cotter, who will be followed by Jerry Walsh and then Ryan Wilmington.
Good evening, Mayor Bis and City Council. My name is Matt Cotter. I'm a resident of the Second Ward and co-chair of the Evanston Environment Board, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. Less than three years ago, in this very room, City Council unanimously declared a climate emergency. This was a declaration of, quote, "A renewed commitment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions at speed and scale." This resolution and the accompanying remarks made by councilmembers Ravel, Newsma, and Reed called for bold and immediate climate action. The time for action is now. As we all know, the 500 largest buildings in Evanston account for about half of our community-wide greenhouse gas emissions. We need to pass the Healthy Buildings Ordinance to accomplish our climate action goals, period. The opposition to this ordinance that remains is based on the status... The opposition to this ordinance that remains is based on the status quo bias, entitlement, and greed. The truth is that the beneficial electrification measures that we're discussing not only improve air quality and reduce emissions, but also reduce utility costs. Tonight, we must listen to the paid experts on city staff, the Environment Board, and the Utilities Commission pass the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jerry Walsh, who will be followed by Ryan Wilmington, and then Leila Robb. If Jerry Walsh is not here, we'll move forward then with Ryan Wilmington, who will be followed by Leila Robb.
Hello, City Council. My name is Ryan Wilmington, and I'm here representing Illinois Green Alliance. We're a nonprofit that consists of architects, real estate developers, engineers, contractors, and energy efficiency experts across the building sector. And I'm here today to tell you that despite what some of the comments are telling you, that the proposals that Evanston is considering, the Healthy Buildings Ordinance and stretch codes, are feasible and beneficial. We know this, one, because our members are already doing this work. They're building buildings, new construction, retrofits, affordable housing, and market rate already because they're better than the stock that already exists. And we even have a member who sits on Washington DC's version of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. And you'll be glad to hear that this ordinance hasn't caused any mass displacements, invictions, foreclosures, or hurt property values in DC. Only created better, healthier buildings for the residents.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Leila Robb.
Hello, people. Hello, Mayor. I've been in Evanston a long time. I was around for the first round with Harley-Clark. And we noticed something when we were reading through the documents, that there's an unclear statement that's stated in Section 1A of the lease in the description of premises. It states tenant and landlord shall have access to and the right to use the fire pits depicted on Exhibit A. Now, this seems so unsubstantial after everything else I've heard, but oddly enough, it is not depicted formally on any of the maps. I've seen in the lease that it's shared space, and that's very unclear. And since it's been reserved by residents, the fire pits, throughout the year and especially on weekends, I'm afraid that there would be conflict at the least and at best. How would that conflict be solved? The tenant may not have realized how popular the fire pits are and may need to know this since the wedding parties might also like the fire pits on the same nights, on weekends. Also, tents will be put up and taken down in this backyard of the mansion. The lease states that where the tents will be will be off limits.
Thank you very much.
For the wedding. After that event, they will be taken down and be for joint use again. Would the fire pits be handled as part of the event if they were in proximity to the tents?
Thank you very much.
Sharing should be clarified.
Thank you very much. This concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comments. We now move to the online public comments, beginning with Aaron Bornstein, who will be followed by Michael Lor, and then Quinton Zandervan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Yeah, hi, this is Aaron Bornstein. Thank you for listening to me. I'm a small Evanston landlord and a member of the North Suburban Housing Providers. I speak today in opposition to the Healthy Building Ordinance because the amount of work required to comply is so extensive that we call this the Evict Your Tenants and Raise Their Rent Ordinance. Obviously, I cannot have tenants living in a building while I change out a furnace, change a hot water heater, change the stove, change the dryers, to say nothing of having to upgrade all the electric circuits to accommodate the increased load. So I have to move out the tenants. We estimate then the cost is somewhere between 40 to 60 grand a unit to make these repairs, which means when I move tenants back in, I have to charge them $400 to $500 more a month to recoup my costs over a 10-year period of time. This is just too much. The ordinance will displace the existing tenants. It'll kill any affordable housing in the buildings it applies to. It'll dry up investment in Evanston generally, and it'll raise rents. So I urge you to please take more time on this one. Let's get the rules. Let's get it spelled out so everybody knows what the costs are and what the consequences will be. Please delay this thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Michael Lor, who will be followed by Quinton Zandervan, and then Margaret Welch.
My name's Michael Lor. I live in Ward 7. I'm going to comment on A16, the Harley-Clark lease. I think overarching, the lease is very unclear and very poorly drafted. Public use seems to be an afterthought in the lease after, ironically, over 80 years of public ownership as one of Evanston's six-city beaches. It's not even clear that the documents on public use or parking are part of the binding lease.
I smoke. I smell. I'm here.
Hello?
Yes, we're sorry. Reposition your time while the previous speaker gets muted. But I think you can go ahead. I'll restart your time when you start talking again.
The lease uses the term proposed, and those two documents aren't specifically included in the lease itself. And there are several examples. For example, what does during business hours mean in the public access document? Do the beach and park close to the public at 5:00 PM on business days, whatever that is? It's very unclear and concerning. The document is also vague and unclear in other areas. For example, the easement section, it states that the parties will reasonably cooperate regarding the coordination of use. What is reasonably cooperate? I've been an attorney for over 30 years, and I've never used that term in a contract, and I've reviewed hundreds of contracts.
Thank you very much.
That needs to be clarified.
Your time is up, sir.
Well, there are many other ambiguities in the contract, and the legal staff needs to do a much better job of reviewing the contract with a focus on public use and parking. I mean, the parking section with costume staff members from the lodge is laughable.
Thank you.
You say in the lease, they're going to do everything in their power to enforce parking. Does that even mean?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Quinton Zandervan, who will be followed by Margaret Welch, and then Mary Rosinski.
Thank you, Mayor Bis. Dear Councilors, thank you for your important work on the Healthy Buildings Ordinance, a critically important part of Evanston taking action against the climate crisis. My name is Quinton Zandervan. I'm a former city councillor in Cambridge, Massachusetts, where we passed a very similar building performance standard in 2023. I currently serve as the Policy Director at Ron Climate, a nonprofit dedicated to supporting municipalities such as yourself in achieving your climate action goals. During the legislative process in Cambridge, we experienced similar calls for delay by the big universities and other business interests in town, specifically MIT and Harvard, the Chamber of Commerce, and the large property owners. But ultimately, all the fear and concern was misplaced, and we successfully adopted one of the most stringent building performance standards in the country. Based on his experience, I urge you not to delay any further. The ordinance as written spells out the very necessary and globally shared goal of achieving zero emissions in your largest buildings by 2050. Please note that the scientific community urges even stronger action much sooner in order to avoid devastating climate impacts to the world's most vulnerable populations. So any further delay is itself an injustice.
Thank you very much.
The ordinance also creates an inclusive rulemaking process to ensure that the goals are equitable and achievable.
Thank you very much.
Please pass the ordinance as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Margaret Welch, who will be followed by Mary Rosinski.
I'm here to speak for the proposed IHO, but Councilmember Nusma, I note that last night, it was brought to your attention that some residents were disturbed by the special order of business for 909 Davis lease. And it was asked if your mind was made up all along on the Civic Center. And the very next night, you have proposed a special order of business on the Civic Center. And some of you wonder why some residents think their concerns are not taken seriously. So I wonder where the, our nonprofit people and our clergy concerned about affordable housing are tonight and why they're not speaking against this proposed IHO, which eliminates the current requirement to place at least 5% of affordable housing on-site. This enables developers to place the affordable units not in the nice new luxury development downtown, but somewhere else. And I seriously doubt that would be the first, 7th, 6th, or 4th Ward. It enables segregation.
Thank you very much.
This proposed IHO demonstrates why the proposed zoning change is not the hill to die on for affordable housing advocates. Please go back to the drawing board.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski.
Hi, thank you all for your time. I've got three quick points I'd like to say. And the first one has to do with the amount of change orders we get and the extensive costs that they are. And I'm thinking that possibly we need to have a professional inspections before we proceed with an RFP and come up with numbers that then have, when they start digging in, they start finding like millions of dollars. And I'm concerned about the Ecology Center. I listened to it. I understand it. I don't agree with the process. And I think had we handled this like people buy buildings and houses, we would not always be having change orders like this in bench parks. So please think of that. Second of all, the 1224 Washington, I'm asking whether or not their property is subdivided already because on the tax records, it's not. And if it's not, why are we creating a substandard lot? And finally, if it's only appraised at $161,000, why are we paying $231? You know, when there's a question in cost, maybe we should have the seller's appraisal, and the buyer gets their appraisal. If they come out close, you average it out.
Thank you very much.
But the $70,000 we could save could help make the house much more attractive in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
I'll see the other one later.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening. We now move to the consent agenda. Are there items that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
Can we take five minutes for those of us who started at 5:00 this evening?
Would council like to take a brief recess? Getting a very mixed set of body language. Just could people give a clear thumbs up or thumbs down? I'll go with the majority.
Sure.
All right. We'll take a brief recess. We'll stand at ease and reconvene at 8:35 sharp, please. All right. The City Council will come back to order. We are now ready for the consent agenda. Could members please share any items they would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
Could you remove A12 and A13?
A12 and A13?
10 and 16.
What's that?
A10 and A16.
A10 and A16?
A7 and A17, please.
A7 and A17?
HCDC-1.
And HBO-1?
That's, I think that came off A17.
So this time, I have A7, A10, A12, A13, A16, A17, and HCDC-1. Are there any further items that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
A11.
A11? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move the consent agenda absent A7, A10, A11, A12, A13, A16, A17, and HCDC-1.
Second.
Councilmember Nguyen moves approval of the consent agenda with the exception of the following items: A7, A10, A11, A12, A13, A16, A17, and HCDC-1. Councilmember, I believe, Harris, seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
No. I'll tell him. Yeah. I know.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries in the consent agenda with the eight items previously read as passed. I know there's a lot of here, a lot of folks here for the Worker Attention Ordinance. That was not removed, so that just passed. Congratulations. However, it was introduced, and so will be on the agenda for final action two weeks from today, February 24th.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, do you have a motion on item A7?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A7, Change Order Number 2 to the contract with Boudala Incorporated Doing Business as Central Rug and Carpet for the Ecology Center renovation, bid 23-55.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Change Order Number 2 to the contract just described. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Sufferden?
Thank you. I have a question for staff, and Shane, I think maybe you're the appropriate person. How are you tonight?
I am good.
All right. So we started with a $2.3 million project, and now we, through Change Orders, have a $3.4 million project. Are we reasonably confident that 3.4 is where we're going to end?
Yes, we are reasonably confident that that is where we're going to end. We have now opened up the entire interior of the building except for the very newest additions, and we believe that we've uncovered all of the issues that need to be addressed.
And the Ecology Center is a unique case because it's a building that was constructed in the '70s by a community group. Can you help me understand what we've learned from this experience that maybe will inform some of our cost estimates and avoid having this repeat itself in the future?
Yes. So the project has definitely been challenging, to say the least. We've identified several structural issues that were unexpected and unseen and were unknowable and unseeable. Now that we have identified those things, we think that we'll be able to move forward. You asked about whether or not, how we would address this kind of in the future to help keep this from happening. Renovation projects always have a larger chance of having change orders, and they also have a larger variety or kind of span of the costs that are associated with them. And it is, so it's important for us to maintain a contingency. It's also important to understand that it's, this change order process is an important step in that. We have to keep contingency for our renovation projects within the budget or within the project. We also have to keep a contingency within our larger budget, which we keep with an item that's called facilities contingency. And those two things have to work together in order to overcome particularly challenging projects like this.
Okay. Do you anticipate in the future any changes to how we approach these things? Do you think more destructive testing on the front end?
We're definitely going to consider more destructive testing on the front end. There's a certain amount of luck that's associated with destructive testing.
Zach, could you, for my benefit and for the benefit of others, just kind of explain what destructive testing is?
It, um...
You know, I just use the term.
It depends on what the construction is. So on the Ecology Center, destructive testing, if we thought that there might be an issue with the, with the joists that are supporting the roof, we would open up the ceiling in local spots that are like a 12-inch by 12-inch hole in the ceiling in multiple locations. And if we were lucky enough to find an issue, then we know to look for more. If we don't, we move forward and expect that what we see is representative.
Okay. So, I mean, destructive testing increases the likelihood of finding things, but it doesn't guarantee it, depending on how lucky you are with where you...
That is exactly correct.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. I mean, obviously, this is a pretty substantial amount of change orders, but I understand that you didn't construct the building, and you're tasked with coming to us with what's necessary to complete the project. So thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
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 Aye.
Councilmember Revelle? Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the change order is approved. Now on item A-10. Councilmember Nusma, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A-10, Resolution 5R-25, expansion of the existing air roof within the city of Evanston.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Resolution 5-R-25. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Councilmember Revel?
I move to hold this item.
Second.
Councilmember Revel moves to hold this item. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there a move to overturn the hold? Seeing none, the item is held and will be on the agenda February 24th for consideration at that time. Now on item A-11. Councilmember Nusma, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A-11, Resolution 13R-25, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the purchase of real property located at 1222 Washington Street in the amount of $231,500.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves adoption of Resolution 13-R-25. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
I'm sorry. I just, what is this appraised for again? This, thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council. I'm Paul Zamazak. I serve as economic development manager. The property appraised at $165,000, that was, I believe, an appraisal dated two months ago. That was something that we presented to the city council in executive session.
So, I'm sorry, but can't we pay the appraised price for this?
We could if the seller would take the appraised price. We started at the appraised value as a negotiating point.
I'm just concerned, you know, that we're overpaying this. So, what happened? I mean, so we offered the appraised value, and it was...
Sure. My starting point for two weeks was the appraised value, and there was no interest from that. So, as negotiations go, they counter, and then we counter, and we settle at a price. So the, to be transparent, the city council gave staff authority to negotiate up to $250,000. That's, that's what I was instructed to do when we went out into the marketplace with the seller, and we were able to negotiate down to $231,500. That's, again, I mentioned this earlier, but that's the, you know, the, the value of a property is what somebody's willing to sell it for, and what somebody's willing to buy it for. So that's, that's, plus the timing is, we're trying to make this work. We could walk away from it, and maybe they get $250 from another buyer.
Right. I just have to ask. I mean, I've been asked what the appraisal was. I think residents have a right to know what it was appraised as and why we're not paying that price.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we have a survey. There was also a question about whether we...
Do we have a plative survey? I think the answer is yes. I'm looking at Sarah, but I can't remember. I think we, I think we do.
She said no, I think.
Okay. Let me, what, so I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
I'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
The answer is we do, actually. I know we do, because we, we had to, to get the legal description and everything for, for this purchase, that we didn't pay for it. The seller, the seller has it, and it's recorded.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 13-R-25 is adopted. Now on item A-12. Councilmember Nusma, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A-12, Resolution 17R-25, approving Levy Premiums Class N2 University Entertainment Venue Liquor License application for Sharon Drysdale Field at Northwestern University, 1501 Central Street.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Resolution 17-R-25. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, Resolution 17-R- sorry, the motion carries and Resolution 17-R-25 is approved. Now on item A-13. Councilmember Nusma.
Mr. Mayor, I move item A-13, Resolution 18R-25, approving Levy Premiums Class N2 University Entertainment Venue Liquor License application for Rocky and Bernice Miller Park at Northwestern University, 2750 North Ashland.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Resolution 18-R-25. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, and one abstaining, the motion carries and Resolution 18-R-25 is adopted. Now on item A-16. Councilmember Nusma, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A-16, Ordinance 20025, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease with Celadon Construction Corporation, NFP, for 2603 Sheridan Road, which is Harley Clark Mansion.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves introduction of Ordinance 20-O-25. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Revel?
Well, I do have a few questions about the lease. First of all, I just point out that there are several exhibits that are missing. I guess those are going to get added eventually. In terms of substantive, so in the, in the recitals, it talks about a boutique hotel with at least 10 rooms. So I'm just wondering, is Celadon likely to want more than 10 rooms? And at what point does that number get determined?
Thank you, Councilmember Revel. Alex Regge Corporation counsel. To the exhibits that are missing, that is correct. Once the lease and the premises are solidified, we'll do a plative survey of the premises, and then we'll also get a legal description from that plative survey, and those exhibits will be added later. As to the, at least 10 rooms that was taken from the RFP, so we can clarify that with Celadon. Additionally, if you'll, you'll see in the memo, this process still has to go to the Preservation Commission for approval, and then through the Land Use Commission for zoning approval. So all of that will be finalized at that time as well.
Yeah. I mean, I think the, the 10-room boutique hotel was in the response to the RFP from the develop, from Celadon. So I think, I think the community would be surprised if we woke up and discovered it was a 20-room boutique hotel. So, so this, this will get discussed and finalized in these preservation and zoning discussions.
Absolutely.
Okay. Then I guess the other part that I'm concerned about is the coordination with beach and park use. So in particular, it talks about how the Parks and Rec, let's see, where is it? Basically, the, the idea is that we're going to be having our parks programs in the dunes area, which, you know, I think the Ecology Summer Camp is how it's described there. But, I mean, the dunes area, that's an ecologically sensitive area, which I would think would not be conducive to a lot of summer camp activities.
Thank you for the question. Michael Callahan, Deputy Director, Parks and Rec. So the Ecology Center has utilized that area for summer camp programming for, for years and years. Those campers are supervised by camp staff at all times, and we can work with the programming to make sure that we would be, you know, teaching, and it's not just letting kids run all over the dunes. That would be instructional, to where it'd be, you know, more of a mission, something that we would be utilizing the area for, not just letting kids run all over and do what they want.
But historically, as I understand it, the, the east lawn area is where we've, where they've had the overnight camping. And so is that now going to be off limits to, to the parks programs?
So we have historically also done campouts over by the fog houses in that area, south of the Harley Clark, just behind the lighthouse.
Okay. And so we haven't really been using the east lawn?
We have used the east lawn a little bit for programming here and there, but we would try to find locations as well. And we have had corporate counsel, you know, has been working with us on, on the verbiage for trying to, to solidify this a little bit more and provide a little bit more guidance on that.
All right. Because I certainly wouldn't want to be losing, you know, the, the kinds of areas that we really need for our parks programs.
Yes. And, and again, working with corporate counsel, we're looking to solidify that a little bit more in, in this proposal, to make sure that we're able to access certain areas that will allow us to continue to program, but to work with Celadon to make sure that we can coexist on the property in, in a, you know, positive manner with each other.
And then there's the, the mention of the fire pits, because those are heavily used by community members. I think reservations are made weeks in advance, and I would think there wouldn't be, what is, what is Celadon envisioning in terms of their use of the fire pits?
Corporate counsel, you want to?
Councilmember Revel, there's actually a representative from Celadon here, Scott Henry. So it might be best if he speaks to that.
Okay.
Mr. Henry, if you could step up?
Good evening. I'm Scott Henry with Celadon. We, in fact, just had a discussion about the fire pits as a sidebar. You know, I think the, we don't envision any crossover between our wedding guests and the fire pit itself. We understand the importance of having the community access that. We're not interested in changing that at all. I think whether it be access to the dunes or the fire pit, you know, the big concern that I have, because ultimately I'm responsible for the upkeep of those areas, that the city work with Celadon in the event that some of those areas are damaged, to make sure that there's a plan for maintenance if, if damage is caused by somebody outside of our guests, you know. But, you know, we're, we're your partner, and we want to work with you to make sure that folks still can use those sensitive areas and still enjoy them without interference.
So is, is there going to be further wordsmithing of the lease in this regard, or is there going to become some kind of separate arrangement with the Parks District?
So this sidebar just happened. I assume I'd have to ask Alex what the next step is, but I think we've come to a pretty good understanding of how that's, that's going to work.
Okay.
Yeah. And Councilmember Revel, I'm working with Director Thompson and her team, and we do intend to further wordsmith this and then bring it back when this item comes back for action with that additional verbiage, based on what we heard here tonight and then conversations with the Parks Department.
Good evening, Council. Audrey Thompson, Director, Parks and Recreation. Thank you, Councilmember Revel, for bringing that up. I do want to just make sure that there's some information provided to council about the heavy usage of the fire circle. So for 2024, we had a little under 2,400 individuals who reported using the fire circle. That's public reservations and internal, a little shot of 500. That really accounts to a huge amount of reservations. So in 2024, we had 122 permit reservations, and that's external. And internal, there were 36 just from, from our department for the, the fire circle. And we already have the fire circle reserved for 30 for 2025. So it's a heavy use. So I just want to make sure that the council understands that there is heavy use of the fire circle.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm relieved to know that there's going to be further wordsmithing and that we get to see these issues nailed down a little bit more when we, when the lease comes back to us.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Yes. I mean, I feel like this should be held until we have more answers. Since it's our responsibility, you know, at least 10 rooms. I appreciate that you don't envision using those, but I think we have to see it in writing. This is just for introduction tonight. I understand. But I am concerned, you know, passing this along without really having in writing the fire pit, which is such a cherished area, the dunes, how those are going to be used, the community access, the east lawn, the access to that, and, and parking. I think there's a big concern about parking. It says, you know, that the staff will do everything in their power to enforce parking. I think we need more specific enforcement wording in there to understand, because if we can't park when we go to the beach in the summer, I mean, that's going to be really detrimental for residents. So, you know, that sort of wording needs to be tuned up. I'd rather see this held over and have it come back to us so we can then ponder this, have two chances to ponder it more fully baked. Let's see. I also have concerns, what, you know, the business hour, it says during business hours. I think that needs to be specified. If that means, you know, it says business hours, public access, the public access document, is the beach and park closed to the public at 5:00? So I think there's just a lot of unclarity in terms of public access. And again, there was a referendum recently. We know that the vast majority of the people want to see this for community use. And I think I don't really have a good sense as to the community use from this document. And I'd rather have two chances to read it, read that, something more baked that's responding to these concerns than just one. So I would, I would be more comfortable having a lot of these questions answered and coming back.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Revel with two minutes left.
Well, with respect to the parking, there was quite a detailed section, I guess, towards the end of the lease document about basically actors who are going to be in costume, who are going to be traffic control people in the parking lot. A very unusual way to make sure that anybody, any guests coming to Harley Clark are not, you know, don't end up parking in the, in the public parking area. So I encourage you, Councilmember Kelly, to read that part of the, of the lease. Oh, I did. It says to the best of their, I read, but the two costume people.
Councilmember Revel has the floor.
Yep, that's fine.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Ordinance 20-O-25 is introduced, and will be back on the agenda for action on February 24th. Now on item A-17. Councilmember Nusma.
Mr. Mayor, I move item A-17. This is Ordinance 1025, the Healthy Buildings Ordinance, mending City Code Section 4-22, Building Energy and Water Use Benchmarking, to incorporate building performance standards and creating Section 2-21.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Ordinance 1-O-25. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Nusma, followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am really excited that this is moving forward and really appreciate all of the work that so many people have put into this. That includes members of our staff, that includes members of our community who were deeply engaged in the process within the Building Electrification Working Group. We have community advocates, we have stakeholders, and we have spent the last couple of weeks re-engaging with everybody involved in this. And I think we have... And I think we have made a lot of progress towards helping the community understand what we're trying to do here. And what we are trying to do, just to remind everybody, is take the next step in our climate action journey that we have been on in this community since 2008, and doing something about the single biggest piece of our emissions pie in Evanston, which is emissions from existing buildings. We've made progress in almost every other category in reducing our emissions, but we have not made any progress in this category. And if we are going to live up to our goal of zero carbon by 2050, it's necessary and proper that we adopt building performance standard like we're talking about here with the HBO. So a couple of key points that have come out of the conversations over the last, over the last couple of weeks. Number one, some clarity. I hope that this ordinance does not insist on some environmentally, you know, pure absolute zero carbon upon penalty of death. That is absolutely not the case. Because equity and cost considerations are built in not only to the HBO, but to the guiding document of CARP, you know, this, this ordinance upon a close reading and upon some of the amendments that we're going to make, it becomes even more clear that net zero is one way of achieving compliance to this ordinance through an alternative compliance measure. And so this has been more broadly communicated to community stakeholders, I certainly hope more broadly understood. Those stakeholders include the school districts, who are now on board. And I believe City Manager Stowe has received confirmation of such in writing. If you could speak to that, Mr. Stowe.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Nusma. Just briefly, in conversations and via text with Dr. Turner of 65 and Dr. Campbell of 202, they are comfortable with the passage of HBO.
Thank you. And that's big. That's big to get two of the most significant community stakeholders on board with the direction we're heading here. Again, we are not trying to displace residents. If we do end up displacing residents, that would be a negative outcome. We want to do everything we can to avoid that. We want to do everything we can to avoid imposing the cost of this change on residents in Evanston who are at least able to afford it. The alternative compliance method allows, you know, finely tuned, you know, building by building guidelines to be in place so that we can make sure we are moving in the direction of, of our climate goals while also being mindful of cost impacts and also being mindful of our, of our housing, of our affordable housing priorities. So to that end, I am going to make a motion that we adopt a number of amendments. They are all included in the packet for this evening. A number of these were in front of us last week. We didn't actually make a motion on these amendments, but we do have, in addition to the ones that were in front of us last week, some additional amendments that I hope clarify the intent of this ordinance. So I'm going to make a motion on those amendments and then ask staff maybe to run us through what they are.
Councilmember Nusma moves to amend ordinance 1-0-25 by accepting the amendments that are enumerated in writing in the packet that was published last week. Councilmember Revelle seconds. I know there's a few folks in line. Is there any discussion on the amendment from folks who've turned their light on? If not, would the clerk, oh, oh, sorry, before we vote, let's hear a description from the deputy city manager of everything that's, all the proposed changes to the ordinance.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. Good evening, members of the council, City Manager Stowe and Clerk Mendoza. I just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight some of the amendments. These stem from multiple conversations that we've had over the last couple of weeks and also feedback from the city council at your last meeting. But just kind of going through one by one, and you, you've seen them in your packet, and hopefully they make sense in the context of the ordinance. But I wanted to talk specifically about kind of what each one of them does. So the first one is, city council will amend the ordinance to incorporate future rules. I think that is a requirement of the ordinance. So as we work through over the next year with our rulemaking bodies, they'll be having a lot of work to do, to come up with rules on administering the ordinance that will subsequently come back to council. And until you adopt those rules, there's nothing enforceable on the ordinance. And that will be a public process. We invite experts to apply, to be part of these boards and our community to get involved in those conversations. Covered property owners will collaborative, collaboratively determine baseline values with staff. The previous version of the ordinance said that staff would determine the baseline values alone. We didn't feel like that was fair. So we've worked on amendments that mentions that covered properties can now work in a collaborative way and, and have a part in that process for establishing those baselines.
And just to clarify, Ms. Revelle, that means we're not analyzing buildings that have already started doing this work?
Correct. Correct. Thank you for that. The next one is a very important one, equity prioritized buildings. We wanted to make sure that we were very clear on the definition on that. So it includes public institutions, including the school districts, religious institutions, nonprofit organizations, and affordable housing. So the intent of the ordinance is not to cause a financial hardship on any of those entities. And in fact, particularly, there's a later amendment I'll talk about where financial hardship is a consideration really for any covered property in looking at alternative compliance. The next amendment, so a public rulemaking process will transparently establish rules, not staff. So we just wanted to make sure that was clear. Maximum normalized site energy use intensity equals energy efficiency. Okay. Alternative, specific to the alternative compliance pathway plans. So Councilmember Nusma mentioned this already, but yes, we're, we're being explicitly clear that an alternative compliance pathway can include achieving net zero emissions through acquiring certified carbon offsets, verified carbon credits, payments to local decarbonization funds, or other mechanisms, rather than achieving absolute zero onsite emissions. Those specific things are actually in the ordinance language themselves. So we're making it very clear in the ordinance that those are viable items that you can pursue in alternative compliance. And then we're also leaving it up to our public bodies to determine if there may be other mechanisms that might be available. So the alternative compliance pathway can be submitted anytime, but at least six months before a reporting submission deadline. I do want to talk a little bit about a concern that came up, what happens in that six-month period if there's something catastrophic. And that's something that we may want to address in the ordinance or yield to our rulemaking bodies to make sure that there is, you know, if something major happened at one of our schools in that six-month period before the submission deadline, we want to make sure we can accommodate that. And that was a request that specifically came from D65. And then, alternative compliance pathways can be canceled, revised, or resubmitted by a property owner. I think that's really important. This is a long ordinance, and there will be a lot of technological changes over the next 25 years. So we want to be reasonable. There may be opportunities to submit something new, and we don't want to lock somebody into something that they submit in 2027, if there's a better way that they can meet compliance. And then lastly, oh yeah, no, two more. So we did add language that alternative compliant pathways will not be unreasonably denied by staff. So right now, it says the city manager approves the alternative compliance pathways. I'm going to talk about the next amendment that speaks to that a little bit too. But we wanted to make crystal clear that we're not going to be unreasonable in our assessment of those and want to make sure that we're trying to get people to a great alternative compliance pathway. And then the last one, which I think is very important, is once the alternative compliant pathway is submitted to staff, either approved or disapproved, that decision is now appealable to the Healthy Buildings Accountability Board, and then their decisions are appealable to the city council. So we have an appeal process throughout. So it's not just necessarily staff's final determination, city manager designee. If somebody doesn't like the ruling that staff makes, that can be appealed to a public body and even subsequently the city council. So just wanted to highlight those amendments. And we have the team here for any questions. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. There's lots of amendments. Okay, let me go over these ones. Oh yeah. So we're moving the responsibility of establishing fines from city staff to the Public Healthy Buildings Accountability Board. So that will be through the, the board. Adding the financial impact of the covered property to the criteria for establishing the fine structure. So again, speaking to not being unreasonable in our assessment of fines, we want to make sure that the financial impact is a consideration in our fine structure. Increasing the percentage of fine revenue that goes to a local decarbonization fund to support compliance from 50% to 90%. You'll probably remember in the previous ordinance, it was 50% of those revenues would go to support the decarbonization fund. And thinking about it, it makes more sense to have that at 90%. And let's, let's put as much money to help our fellow buildings as we can into that fund. The idea is there'd be maybe a 10% admin fee to work through that. That would come back to the city. And then requiring the Healthy Buildings Accountability Board to monitor and report the ordinance's impacts on housing affordability. So that's something we specifically want to hear back from them. And clarifying the expertise required for board and committee membership and refining responsibilities. That came out of a discussion with our electric, it's the electrification working board. Right? Okay. Yeah, they, they had talked about making sure we're not limiting the amount of expertise that we can have in the ordinance and offered that amendment. I think that's the last slide. Is that correct, her? Okay. Those are the amendments. Thank you for listening to me.
So the amendments have been moved and seconded. I guess there's discussion on these amendments and then some additional discussion after that.
So to that point, is there discussion on the amendments? Or would the folks like to vote on the amendments and then have a discussion on the whole amended thing? Seeing, seeing no interest in talking about the amendments themselves, would the clerk please take the role on the amendment to the ordinance?
Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron.
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the ordinance is amended. Councilmember Nusma, you still have the floor if you want it.
Thank you. I think we are definitely heading in the right direction here. And hopefully the community is becoming increasingly comfortable with the direction we're going. And the number of supporters is increasing. We're heading in the right direction. I want to make sure that all the members of the city council are comfortable with the direction we're going. And I think there is a benefit in taking a little bit more time to make sure all the council members are fully comfortable. So I am prepared to make a motion to hold this till the next meeting.
Be a table. I think something, it was held last time, so they can't be held twice.
I would make a motion to table it until our next meeting. Second. Motion to table is debatable.
Is the table debatable?
Councilmember Harris.
So I, I'm happy to hold off and make the motion.
I genuinely care. I know the motion to hold is not.
It is not debatable.
It is not?
Okay. So do you want to pause on the motion?
I'll pause the motion then.
All right. Councilmember Burns, followed by Saffron, if he still wants to speak, given that there's a likely delay about to occur.
Kind of bad for everybody too, is I, I need a little bit of time on this. This is a big issue. I want to first address the Northwestern students, but there's, there's a lot to unpack. And I want people to, to understand my thought process around this. So first, I just wanted to speak directly to the Northwestern students. I don't think many are, are here at this point. Some may be here. I met with Fossil Free today, had a great meeting with them. Separate from this, I'm engaging in some group discussions with the Northwestern Student Board around affordable housing, trying to, you know, and that's another matter. But I, I just want to speak to them and say, especially to the person who's going to say, this is like their lifeline or something to that, to that effect. And the, the line is strong. I want to tell you that. And everybody that is not here, but will listen back on this, as Councilmember Nusma said, we're close. And, but I appreciate your advocacy. Again, as I told the Fossil Free organizers earlier, I started off as an advocate organizer. It's a different perspective. As an organizer, you don't have the resource, resources, the time, and maybe even the interest to represent multiple causes and viewpoints, right? Like you're singularly focused on what you're trying to achieve. And as I said, I think in our last meeting, that's what you're supposed to do, right? But the role up here is a little different, right? I, I consider, I have a larger constituency. That's my responsibility is to also understand how our institutions feel, right? And it's not just Northwestern that is concerned about this. I've also, we've also consistently heard even this evening from building owners. Our, our faith, our religious institutions have reached out to me, and I think Councilmember Harris personally, because there's a, a group of, of black clergy who, who, who represent congregations in mostly the fifth and second wards who are concerned about this, who, for whatever reason, were not as familiar as they need to be about this and, and need more information. And so this is not a, you know, it's, it's frustrating sometimes that it seems like we're always trying to angle to, to make this a community versus Northwestern thing. And I'm, and I'm not trying to excuse them of anything or tell you how to feel, but I, I want, I want to give you more information so you understand the full breadth of what is being considered as it relates to this ordinance. And it's much deeper than, than, you know, any concerns that Northwestern may have. The, the second thing is, is are these concerns warranted? Are they just unnecessary obstacles or attempts to try to thwart or further delay this ordinance? I, I don't have enough evidence to believe that. And here's why. One, I believe we've discussed this, that other cities have approached this very thing differently. And if that's wrong, I, I want to know from staff. But what I've heard from being up here is other communities have approached this differently. So again, for that reason alone, it just shows that, you know, just because we're hearing from Northwestern, the building owners about this, and they're a little concerned about it, doesn't mean that the worst thing, you know, evil empire, it's just different. They're trying to adjust to it and better understand it. So that's, that's one. Two, the, I think we've already established early on, because again, for those who are coming in late, this has been amended now, you know, this is, look at all the amendments, right? So we started at a different place than we are now. So as people try to keep up with all the amendments, that, that creates some challenges obviously as well. And, but where we started is, is at, is, is zero onsite emissions, right? And, and now we've kind of walked it back to all these other things, but that's where we started.
As a point of information.
Councilmember Burns has the floor.
You'll have, is zero, zero onsite emissions. We talked earlier, and that's why I took that note. So if it's something different, when you have an opportunity, you can clear that up. But I asked you that because I, I was prepared to say something today. So we started with zero onsite emissions. And that is also something that I don't think we've been able to find any other community that has had that type of specific language in their ordinance. So again, for those two reasons alone, I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. I'm just saying, for an institution, for a building owner, it makes sense for them to be trying to better understand how we're going to get there and what this means for the institution or their business. I, I think that's reasonable, right? And, and so this is the first point I'm just trying to make. I think that is reasonable. I think I can, I can, I can follow that and feel like the concerns are coming from a place of good faith with that information. And again, if it's wrong, then, then you can correct it after I'm, you know, please correct when I'm done. Not getting into the letter, I only read it kind of sweepingly, but here's what I do know, is I had a conversation with Councilmember Nusma. I would, you know, if council, council would allow just a little bit more, or some time here. But here's what I know from Councilmember Nusma. He met with Northwestern. He told me this. He brought alongside with him an engineer who he felt had more expertise, more direct expertise to, to understand how to, you know, not only help Northwestern understand how this would not hurt them, but also to, to almost evaluate what their concerns are, to make sure, I'm not going to say exactly what you said, you know, but we, he had that meeting. And what he told me almost verbatim was, is that that person said, basically, they're not, they're not bull jiving, as Deion Sanders would say, and that they can get, they said this publicly, that they can get 80% of the way. And the reason why they can't get 20% of the way was not only reviewed by Councilmember Nusma at that meeting, but the engineer that he selected, independent engineer that he selected to come out to the meeting. And she's, and she evaluated it in that meeting and determined that the reason why the technical difficulties or challenges that, that make it difficult for them to get from 80% to 100% from 80% to 100% were legitimate. And you see councilmember Newsma shaking his head. Again, not trying to tell you how to feel, I just want to make sure, this is how I always approach this. I want people to have all the information because I think we're all smart enough to make our own decisions once we have all the information. Those are facts. Here's, here's the information that I still need as a council member to, to get behind this, and I know we're going to get there, is that now that I have more loan information, I'll quickly talk about that in a second. I actually met with CPACs in Illinois Climate Bank, things that were kind of loosely referenced in the packet, I met with them. I understand the terms now. Those are the type, that's the type of information people need to make a decision. Is it one or 2%? Is it three or 6%? Is it a bridge loan over 24 months or 30 years? This is the type of information that people are asking me. I have to be able to respond to that as an elected official. So I've had those meetings. And now that I have that information, what I would like to do is, is have a quick meeting with building owners to say, okay, now that we know the terms, or I know the terms, you know, how, what's your reaction to it? And is it, does it make these projects more feasible, right? I would like time to do that. The, there were about four different programs that we went over when I, when I discussed it with it. I think only one worked with religious institutions. That's important to know. Maybe not to everybody, but for me who, who has religious institutions saying, hey, we're concerned about this, that's important to know. So now I know it's only one out of the four that would, that might work with a religious institution. I have a follow-up call with them to, to confirm. And, and so I want to be able, be able to bring those terms to the religious institutions and say, okay, again, does this make this feasible for you, right? I, I think that's reasonable. I, I like to meet with building owners and experts. I told councilman Newsma this earlier. He has somebody that I'm going to meet with to better understand how this would be operationalized in real time, understand everything is going to be figured out in rulemaking process. Great. I need to be able to understand this for myself. How do we operationalize this based on different systems types? 50% of the buildings that have systems set up like this, they're probably going to have to kick everybody out at some point because the whole building is going to have to, you know, be vacated in order to make these improvements. Or, you know, 50, 25% of these building types are gonna, if they're set up in a certain way, they can phase it in, right? We don't have to kick people out, maybe we do it at a floor at a time. I need some basic information about how this is going to be realistically operationalized so I can explain this to my community. And, and then the last thing is, uh, and this is a big one. I think one of the things that I've heard the most from building owners in particular, commercial real estate holders, that is concerning is how this impacts property value. How it impacts their ability to secure construction loans? How does it impact the interest rate? And, and how does it impact the ability, how does this change commercial real estate sales? We rely a lot on, on, uh, real estate transfer income. How does this affect that? If not at all, fine, but this is information I need. Not only do we rely on real estate transfer, uh, transfer tax funds for reparations, I forgot about that. We also rely on just like to do basic government services. That money goes into our general fund. So I want to know if it is going to impact sales, even if it's a small amount, what does that look like? Again, I'm not saying we can't reach out to other communities and figure that out. That's homework I'm doing. I'd like at least another meeting to, to finish up those conversations. I'm working to get to yes on this. And so again, uh, we're close. It, it, again, when I was, I was a community organizer advocate, I was at this same podium. Tunnel vision. This is what needs to happen and probably.
So speaking of.
This is the last, hold on, this is the last thing I'm running up. And, and, and probably, you know, we've been up there when Wynn was like, well, he doesn't know the whole picture, right? But as an elected official, understand we have a broader constituency that we have to serve, but I think we're close to getting this done. Thank you, mayor, appreciate it.
Uh, councilmember Sufferton, do you want to take some time too, or do you want to wait for two weeks?
Hold up this microphone cool off a little bit before I ask my two questions. Um, no, no, it's all right, man. And I presume in a week we'll have a more formal understanding of District 65 and 202's position, perhaps something in writing. I know I can't, can't ask Luke to write anything on their behalf, but is that safe to assume that you'll ask them to give us a more detailed understanding of what their position is?
Sure, councilmember Sufferton, I'm happy to do that. I did forward text messages to the council per request from another council.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I can make this request directly of them or directly to them through the magic of YouTube, something a little bit.
But also television.
Yeah. And sound, something more substantial than they're comfortable would be helpful. Uh, I think that this is a pretty consequential thing. And then also, um, since we probably have this information, can we figure out what the healthability ordinance might be for the potential sale price of this building? Uh, I'm sure that we've looked at what it would cost when we thought we were going to keep it. I'd like to know what the potential discount we would have to give to a potential buyer would be, were this to pass as well. So hopefully those are two pretty easy things to accomplish in a week. That's it. Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time. Uh, councilmember Newsma has, uh, sorry, councilmember Kelly.
Um, so I want to speak more from an environmentalist standpoint. I'm not real excited about, I mean, I think it's nice work, so I want to be clear on that, about passing a plan to pass a plan, passing a plan to make a plan. Um, you know, I'm really concerned that in an effort to do this, it's so full of escape valves and, um, and, you know, and nothing's enforceable that, that, it just, it concerns me. I would rather see, I agree. I think, you know, the time for action is now and I do appreciate, I think that, you know, academically based community service, like what Northwestern is offering, this is what we should be engaging in much more of. And that doesn't preclude any option for us to have control and set how we want to do this. We should be leaning into Northwestern's expertise exactly for something like this. So, you know, rejecting it, yeah, anyway, I just want to say that, you know, I'm not real excited about making a plan to make a plan. That's every day, there's like promises of more escape valves. I want a real action plan with real teeth in it. So that's where I stand right now. And I do appreciate Northwestern, this is, again, I think we should lean into Northwestern's expertise and, and that is precisely how such a core anchor institution should be engaging and I hope we'll see a lot more of this and we can plan for that. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go to second opportunities. Councilmember Newsma, you have 30 seconds left. I had the impression from body language, you were responding to someone else who went way over, so if you want to take a little bit extra time.
Sure, let me just make a couple of responses to points that have been raised and then I'll make my motion to table this. So councilmember Burns, you mentioned the zero onsite. It was not the intent of the original draft to preclude alternative compliance through net zero mechanisms. I think we've made that more clear with these, with these amendments. So we didn't really change the intent, we've made the intent more clear. Number two, the conversation that I had with my friends at Northwestern didn't go down exactly as you described, just for the record, but the general conclusion was the same. Northwestern is already doing this work, already thinking about doing this work and the plan that they shared with me made sense. They have legitimate concerns and it is not the intent of myself, or I don't think any, I don't think any of us to halt the scientific investigation that requires steam for some processes. You know, we are, we are very mindful of, of that reality and willing to work with Northwestern to implement rules that make sense for that institution. And it is my sincere hope and deepest desire that we can do so in a spirit of collaboration and openness and Dave, you're nodding at me and smiling, right? Because that's where we both want to go. We can do this together. You guys have good expertise. You have the, you know, a huge impact on our community and, you know, I'm going to take President Schill at his word in his inaugural address when he said that climate action was one of his priorities. So there is absolutely a way for us to get together and come together and work together on this. The ordinance that we're setting up allows that to happen in an open meetings forum so that not only Northwestern's input can be taken into account, but all the other stakeholders in town as well. With regards to the potential negative side effect of displacing people during a renovation, that would, that's absolutely would not be an acceptable outcome, which is why we have to really talk about alternative compliance and make sure that the rules we have in place do not allow that to happen. Because we need to, we need to do two things. We need to, we need to reduce our community's carbon footprint, but we also need to be mindful of the burden on housing for everybody in Evanston. And those are not mutually exclusive. We can do those both together. So, uh, and with regards to councilmember Sufferton's question about the impact on this building, uh, if this building is renovated, the new requirements of the stretch code would kick in and the changes that are in the works, potentially in the works over the next 25 years for Northwestern, for residential buildings, for any building above 20,000 square feet, would be done sooner rather than later at this building, even without the HBO, because the requirements of the new building code would be triggered. I'm going to turn to staff to give me a nod and affirmative and make sure I'm not saying anything out of line. So that having been said, I will now, unless anybody else wants to, a motion to table this item to our next meeting, which is February 24th.
Second.
All right, councilmember Newsma moves to table this item to the February 24th meeting. Councilmember Wynn seconds. This is a non-debatable motion, uh, which is a fact I'm going to try to remember. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance one dash O dash 25, as has now been amended, will be on the February 24th agenda for final action. Uh, councilmember Revel, do you have a motion relative to item HCDC one?
Sure. I move approval of, I move approval of ordinance two dash zero dash 25 to repeal and replace Title V, Chapter 7, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, and this is, this is for action.
I second.
Councilmember Revel moves passage of ordinance two dash O dash 25. Councilmember Hadakakis seconds. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, yeah. I pulled this off for two reasons, because I do want to.
Hold on one second, councilmember. Could we please have order in the chamber? Councilmember Kelly, go ahead.
Because since we are about affordable housing, I do want to ensure that we have, that we require units onsite, that we don't leave it at zero, no matter what we're saying we're charging. I think that's fundamental, but also more importantly, I spoke with today with Deputy City Manager Ruger and who's going to get, bring the union presidents together to talk about having a portion of that, that would be for employee workforce housing, which I think we really need. We really want to encourage our employees to, to live here and to make it affordable. So I would like to see this come back with a certain percent that's required onsite and with a portion of that after discussions, I would just like everybody to see that as an option, after discussions to decide like what percent of that we would allocate for, for housing for our employees, for our workforce here. And I think that would be, you know, much appreciated. We'll have that meeting between now and then and come back with an actual proposal as to, you know, what, what would be the income amount and what percent. So I'd like to see, see, see that, I'd like to hold to bring that back in a couple of weeks after meeting with both Deputy City Manager Ruger and the three union presidents, the police, fire and ASME presidents to come back with a proposal for, to incorporate employee housing in our inclusionary housing ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves to hold this item. Councilmember Sufferton seconds. Is there a motion to overturn the hold?
I'll move that.
Councilmember Hadakakis moves to overturn the hold. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Revel seconds. Remind me, is the motion to overturn the hold debatable or no? We debated it last time, so it must be debatable. Is there, is there any discussion on the motion to overturn the hold? Councilmember Hadakakis followed by Burns.
So in speaking with staff, we, we met over two months discussing this ordinance and it is also really important timing wise that we have this on the books because we have things coming through land use that we want 5% more inclusionary housing units. We want to close those loopholes that we have. And so it's really important that we get this passed and so it's effective April 1st. All these ideas that we have brought, been brought up, we can discuss in housing, community development and work on. Like we, this is something we should be revisiting every six months, every year. So it's not just that we set this and I, I can't remember, when's the last, like the last time we changed this, this was like three years ago. Like this has to be revisited, like there's things we don't know, six years ago, there are things we don't know and because of the unknown nature of some of the renovations, like in tax credits, you know, we've made some changes that like, I would personally like to bump up the numbers if the numbers that we find with more data, we, we can do that. I would also say that we have to get away from having such a narrow view of what affordability means. I really appreciate it. In the memo, we have five things that we should be investigating and we really need to be doing everything. And so, um, I like the idea of having, um, units for, you know, city workers. I think that's something we should explore. There's also, um, I've been talking to staff about, you know, preference, like loan assistance for first time homeowners and, you know, there's, you know, programs in other cities. We need to be doing all that. So, but it's really important that we pass this tonight, so we have this on the books for April.
Councilmember Burns followed by Revel.
Um, yeah, I think I was going to really echo the same thing and, and what I'll, what I'll add to, to, to that consideration is that, you know, we have a senior housing planner now. We have, we didn't have this before. We have a full-time professional whose job it is to work on, um, um, policy development and planning. And so when councilmember Hadakakis says, oh, you know, we can update this and councilwoman Revel said, we can update this, we really have a staff person that can allow us to move more nimbly when it comes to modifying policies as we see things changing, as well as some of the institutional things we always had, ACDC committee, et cetera, and some of our, you know, other positions that we already have budgeted in our community development department. So I agree. I think, I love the idea, I really do, and, and this actually might be the right way to approach it. I just think we need to, I'd love for our committee to discuss it and let's talk about it and then figure out how to incorporate it, but I love the idea.
Councilmember Revel.
Uh, right, well, I would, excuse me, echo councilmember Harris' argument that we should, we want to approve this tonight so that it can go into effect April 1st and we're ready then when a new, any new developments come for approval. In addition, so we, we can, then HCDC can continue to look at the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and see if additional changes are warranted and desired. In addition, we're also going to be dealing with a strategic housing plan and that might be also a place where we talk about the workforce housing option. So, um, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance isn't the only tool we have. And then I would, I mean, HCDC talked at great length about whether to eliminate the requirement that there be some sites, some units onsite and we opted instead for a really onerous fee and lieu that would just, I think, I think no developer would, would really contemplate not putting them onsite and paying this extravagant amount of money. So I urge us to be able to move ahead tonight with the ordinance.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time. We go back to councilmember Kelly with three minutes left.
Thank you. Just a question, which, what ordinances, HBOs around here, I mean, IHOs, were you looking at like as a frame of reference? You just like, which cities were you looking at?
Um, it should be in the memo. There's approximately ten, all the communities in the Chicagoland area and then about 20 nationally.
Which one is this modeled after? Is this modeled after anyone? So.
It's not cookie cutter. The trick about an inclusionary housing ordinance is that it's extremely market-based. And so what's important to do is to look at all the various elements and align the components.
Okay, thank you. So it's not modeled, so I'm looking at, right now at Northbrook and their Inclusionary Housing Ordinance is 15% required onsite. 15% required onsite. Highland Park, 20% required onsite. Evanston's now, zero. I'm sorry, that's unacceptable. We're all about affordable housing. These are for buildings that are going to be built. We will have units right there that are affordable, and I'm saying we should have gone from 5 to 10, but now we've gone from 5 to 0, and I can't support this, and I'm really disappointed that you won't even hold it over that, Juan, you want to override this, instead of let it, bring it back and consider raising that level. Look, again, 20% in Highland Park, 15% mandated on-site, and I'm saying have a portion of that for our workforce here so that they can find affordable housing. I'm really disappointed. I hope you'll change your mind on that.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Hadda-Caddis for a second opportunity with three minutes left.
If you want to co-refer for that, your motion, I'm gladly, I will gladly co-refer it, but we need to pass this now, so--
So, we can bring this back--
Councilmember Hadda-Caddis has the floor.
Yeah, so, if you want to refer some legislation to look into your idea, I will co-sponsor it gladly. But it's really important, and I want to listen to staff, because we do want this on the books for April 1st, and I don't agree with the, with your assumption that we're making a big mistake not having, you know, requiring on-site. The penalties, I think, will allow us to do great things, potentially. I don't think anyone's going to take the penalties, because it's, what, like, a 100-unit building would be $16 million? Yeah. So, I mean--
The penalties are different.
I like your idea, but I'm not, it's not a good idea to hold it.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to a second opportunity for Councilmember Burns with four minutes left.
You know, I just want to say, and staff has spoke to this, I just want to make this clear, oftentimes, I feel like this is missed. I don't think people are in perfect agreement with you, Councilmember Kelly. What you're saying you're trying to achieve, I believe, and I want staff to confirm this, that they believe based on how this is written, we're going to achieve the same things, going about it differently, but the result will be the same. You're questioning that, which is fair. I'm just, I just want the community to understand that we're arriving at the same place, right? Which is, we're going to have, especially because of what Cook County has done, 20% on-site. I'm literally dealing with a development right now, they don't even care about our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance because of what Cook County is doing. They're 20% all-in, no problem. I'm dealing with that right now, Maple just had a community meeting. So, I just, you know, I would love to learn more about your concerns, Northbrook, et cetera. We can continue to discuss that, but there's been a lot of time put into this, and they believe that the result will be the same. So, I just want to communicate that loud and clear to the community, because I know it, again, a lot of political rhetoric, it sounds good to say 5 to 0. Staff is saying we're going to be at 20%, right? In most cases, 15 to 20%. That's what staff is saying. They're not saying 0. That's what Councilmember Kelly is suggesting, and that's being questioned. No, I'm talking about where we arrive, right? We just, we're arriving at it differently. You want to see it, you want to see it where it's set aside, they're saying, based on the way they structured it, when you look at the opt-out amounts that we dramatically increased and everything else they've done, that we're going to arrive at the same place, which is what I think the community really cares about. How many units are we going to have in new developments? Staff is saying we arrive at the same place. You're questioning that? That's fair, but I just wanted the community to understand that. Thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first or second time, so for a third opportunity, Councilmember Kelly with two minutes left.
Thank you. The issue is, potentially, you're going to collect money, potentially build some more. Where? The point is about integrating the city economically, and these are, you know, many of these developments are going to be happening downtown, and I want to ensure that while they're building the building, we're putting affordable units in. There's no reason not to mandate on-site units, no reason at all. And furthermore, why wouldn't we want to mandate a certain percent of that for our workforce? It's, as you said, potentially, we're going to collect more money, and where are we going to put those housing? We don't know. We don't even know if they're going to go up. This is, this is an assurance that when a building goes up, a certain percent are going to be affordable. So, you know, I'm, this is very regressive, and I'm sorry we're moving this direction, but I would like to ask, Juan, when you said, so you would co-refer to come back and amend this potentially, so I don't understand--
No, your idea about providing housing for municipal workers, I think that's a great idea.
This is a very easy, this is one way that we can easily do this--
I think you're simplifying it. This is, I mean, please--
Councilmember Kelly has the floor if she wants to.
No, I wanted to just understand. So, you want to leave this at 0, so you're going to zero, mandate 0 units on-site, brand-new, fancy luxury developments going up? We'll keep those rarefied, right? If they want to keep it rarefied, they can keep them rarefied, we're not going to put in any inclusionary housing. Okay.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddis, do you want to respond to this very good faith discussion that's going on up here?
You know, if you don't like it, you can vote no on the inclusionary housing. So, I will gladly co-refer your idea, because I actually like it, seriously. And please come to the housing community developments, like, no one shows up for those, and we have, like, really interesting conversations about this stuff, so please, please, yep.
Juan, just, may I just make one?
All right, Councilmember Burns--
Just because I was--
So, at this time, no one's requesting to speak for a second or first time, so Councilmember Burns with two and a quarter minutes left for a third opportunity, then we'll go to fourth opportunities.
I just want to clear up, because something was said that I didn't say. I think what staff is saying, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that, first of all, people are not really opting out right now, and that because we've dramatically increased the opt-out amount, it won't happen, right? It will very rarely, if not ever, happen. That's what I'm saying. And so, effectively, we will achieve what I think you want to achieve, which is 20% on-site, especially with the incentive program that Cook County has developed. And if that doesn't happen, we're nimble enough, especially with our senior housing planner now, to make adjustments.
I think, just to, I think the point is that, obviously, if the idea were that it would literally never happen under any circumstances, you wouldn't need it in there. The point is the fees are so high that on the very rare occasions, should it ever be utilized, we'll have the tools to do more with those funds than we would have. Like, if you look at the, there was an authorization today to spend money in the Ninth Ward on, from the Affordable Housing Fund, to create an affordable unit, which was way less money than these new elevated fees. And so, the point is not, we can promise it'll never happen, the point is, we're very confident it'll extremely rarely happen, and when it does, it gives us the tools to actually do better than the thing that got opted out of. But Director Flax, if you want to correct me where I'm wrong, that'd be--
No, that's absolutely right, Mayor Biss, thank you. But I also want to point something else out. The way Chicago got to its 20% was based on the state tax credit, property tax credits for having 20% of the units on-site, affordable, at or below 60% of the area median. That's what's driving the developers to do this, because they get a 30-year property tax break. So, if we want to change the income levels, we have to be aware of what that may do to that 20%, too. And our ordinance has all kinds of flexibility if somebody wants to do different income levels, so we have the capacity to find out what income levels we might need for our employees or for other people that may not be served by that 60% or below. But, you're not going to be able to necessarily get 20% affordable units on-site if you raise that threshold, the income threshold, which we may need to do if we're looking at trying to provide housing for some of our city workers, depending on who we're trying to help. So, that is why I think, as Councilmember Hadda-Caddis recommended, that we look at these things and really figure out how they apply. But in the meantime, we want to be able to get as many of these 20% on-site units as we can in new development, and we also need to support, because this is not a forever state agreement, we have to lobby to have that continued. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Newsima.
Thank you, Chair. I understand what my counterpart to my right was saying. When I first saw 0, that made me nervous. We know we're landlocked. We know that they'll pay out, but where do we put that housing? So, it made me nervous, but, and there's never, you can never promise something that you're not in control of, but I'm going to believe staff when they say people are not going to, on a regular, buy out of this. But I have to admit, when I heard the 0, I was very nervous about that and didn't want it, but I think we'll land okay.
Councilmember Newsima.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to support this. I think it's an effective and thoughtful ordinance that goes above and beyond, kind of oversimplifying the issue by insisting on an arbitrary minimum number, taking account to, taking into account market factors, and as Councilmember Burns has said, we're going to get to the same point anyway. I also want to draw a little bit of analogy to our HBO discussion, and I think there's an analogy of zero carbon and 20% on-site. If you can't get quite all the way to 20% on-site, there is an alternative compliance mechanism built in that is quite robust and will allow even more carbon reduction slash affordable housing to be accomplished elsewhere. So, it's really kind of an elegant solution, and I look forward to voting on this, hopefully soon.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first, second, or third time, so for a fourth opportunity, we go back to Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I also want to point out in that these ordinances from Northbrook and Highland Park and others, that they're permanent affordability. So, ours, we've always had a very weak Inclusionary Housing Ordinance in the city, it's just, has become weaker and weaker, but it's permanent. So, ours was 20 or 30 years, I guess, and so now, if they do put it in, what is it? Is it still at 30 years?
There's no difference between the current ordinance and the proposed ordinance in terms of for-sale units.
For 30 years.
Well, for-sale units are in perpetuity before and perpetuity moving forward, and 30 units, 30 years before and 30 years--
So, I know in these ordinances, it's permanent affordability and rental, so, you know, I would like to see ours strengthened that way, too. It's, I think it's, again, I feel like we overall, you know, for the city, for all our talk about affordability, our ordinances has, for many years, been very weak. But, and Councilmember Hadda-Caddis, I look forward to talking with you to co-refer a work on an ordinance for workforce. Thank you.
I just, can I just make one, just wanted to point out, and in this slide is an example of, in every community, and this is a very sort of rough summary, there's a lot of different elements at play. So, for example, in Highland Park, the AMI, or the level of affordability needed, it goes up to 120%. So, the types of folks that are helped are a little different, and the cost burden and the revenue lost on the developer is significantly less. That's not to put any negative on any of these other ones, they're just achieving different goals, and our ordinance and the direction the council's given staff to move forward with this, with this ordinance, is to maximize the number of units with a focus on households at 60% AMI or less, with a maximum of 80% AMI if needed to increase that. So, that's sort of, just wanted to point out the complexity sort of of just comparing, it's not apples to apples, with other communities.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first, second, third, or fourth time, so for a fifth opportunity with 15 seconds left, we go back to Councilmember Kelly.
I just want to say, but there is guaranteed housing when these buildings are built, and it's very specific as to what they are on the different AMIs, but they are, they are 20, again, 20% and 15%.
Will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to overturn the hold?
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsima?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
With six voting in favor and one voting against, the motion receives more than the required 2/3 threshold, and therefore, the hold is overturned. Now, would the clerk please take the roll on the underlying motion, which is final passage of ordinance 2-0-25?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsima?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 2-0-25 is passed. Now, this brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Nguyen?
No report.
Councilmember Newsima?
No report.
Councilmember Burns?
That last piece almost got me, the in-perpetuity, again, I'm, that is something I would like more information on moving forward, you know, but again, I believe we can make quick adjustments, but that one is a real thing for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel?
No report.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddis?
No report.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
You know I have a report. Welcome, Black History Month. So, during Black History Month, I always wear a Black Created t-shirt every day of the month. Women's History Month, I do the same, any other history months. If anybody wants to give me a t-shirt, I will proudly wear it. We have the educational fair, February 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. in the parasol room, and we're hoping people come get information. This is through the reparations program, the educational committee. As you heard, the great news about Love Your Block, I'm so excited about that, and we look forward to doing this work in the community. And tomorrow, Second Ward meeting, please register, it is online until the weather gets right. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsima?
Pursuant to Five Illinois compiled statutes 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding the purchase or use of real property. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in Five ILCS 120/2A, Section C5.
Second.
Councilmember Newsima moves that the city council convene itself into executive session to discuss the item just, the items just enumerated. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsima?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 10:01 p.m., the city council resolves into an executive session to begin immediately in the councilmember library.